Call the meeting to order. Our first item tonight is a special presentation, and I'm gonna ask Claude Harwood if he would to come up front and sit down with me in these chairs.[33.04][33.04](Applause).[34.04][34.04](Audience laughing). Come over here and have a seat.[36.04][36.04](Audience laughing). You're probably wondering what's going on tonight, aren't you?
It crossed my mind.
Claude, the city and everybody here wants to recognize you tonight.
Thank you very much.[46.12][46.12](Audience laughing).
I guess I could sit up here with a more distinguished gentleman than you. Thank you very much for what you do for our community.
Thank you. My kind words.
Well, we think back over the years of how many people you have affected over their lifetime in times of sorrow, in times of happy when there had been weddings, and in just general times when people wanted flowers, special holidays or special occasions. You affected so many people with you and your florists, and you continue to do that today. We thank you so much for what you do.
It's a pleasure to be able to do it.
In just a minute, I'm gonna read a resolution, but I want to first say 70 years, over 70 years in the forest business.[96.11][96.11](Applause).
Actually, my father opened up in '42.
In '42?
And I didn't start doing anything until... I worked a little bit, but I didn't learn to design anything until I was retired.
Well, you've been doing forest business longer than I've been alive.[121.11][121.11](Audience laughing). And you've affected so many people. I want to go around the council and give all of my council members an opportunity to say anything they would like to say before we do the resolution. This louder, I'll start with you if you have anything to say.
I want to say that I've been with him for a family year.
Long time.
And I've been with him.[142.51][142.51](Audience laughing). I've been in my soul. He's done a whole lot of flowers. Thank you that I put them out. Thank you, Claude.
Ms. Hughes?
Well, Claude, if I got any flowers, and you probably did 95% of them, if anybody ordered them here in town, they always knew by the design that you had done the flowers. They always said that came from Claude, didn't it? And I said, yes, it did. You had a very distinct design about your flowers, and they were very unique, and they were always beautiful. And I thank you for that.
Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Harwood, I want to thank you for your many years of service to not only just the Albemarle community, but Stanley County community in general. I do recall a few occasions where you even took it on the national level. If I recall, I think you took, done a Christmas tree or something at the White House, or in Washington DC or something of that nature. But I want to thank you as a man, especially as a young man growing up, you kept me when I was dating and stuff.[215.12][215.12](Audience laughing) Through anniversaries and birthdays and stuff of that nature, you kept me at the doghouse many times.[222.81][222.81](Audience laughing) So I do appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ferris?
I don't know that Mr. Harwood and I have had the pleasure of meeting. I know he's been around for a while, been around for a few decades in Albemarle. But what I can say is always great to have, see local businesses have a lot of success. And what I can also say is just judging by the number of folks in the room tonight, it's great to have good people be a part of the community, and thank you very much for everything you've done for Albemarle.
And I'll say, all these people in this room, we were trying to keep this quiet and it be a surprise. So it was hard to get people here and still... Ms. Hall, you're next.
So Claude, I'm not gonna talk from that place, okay? Thank you. Thank you for being here for so many people, not just like you. You know, you are one of those folks that as a little girl, when I was 16, you'd come and see my dad. I knew there was something special about you, and it would drive you. And folks all over the state and Wisconsin, Jody McCloud being one of them, down in Clayton, thinks that you still hang the moon and the stars with every poor things that you do. He might be out there doing what you were doing 50 years ago to help the nation, but he still is here. Thank you. So...
Mr. Whitley?
You don't have to turn around, I know I'm directly behind you. I've thoroughly enjoyed the flowers in our church over the years. The thing that comes to mind to me is a generic term like Harwoods. I have a daughter that works for Clorox. Clorox means bleach, right? Harwoods means a florist. You call a Harwoods to get your flowers. And that's where, that's, I think, where the majority of people have. I know that's where I have, not recently, but I did at one time send a few flowers, but never have a lot. But I'm so glad we could do this tonight, and a lot of people here to show you how much you are appreciated in this community.
Mr. Dry?
Well, Claude, after all that's been said, what can I say other than you've been a good friend to all of us in this community for many, many years. I got here three years before you started, so at least was here before many of these folks. And throughout my life, when the occasions came for flowers, your family was always there for our family, and we appreciate that. That the beauty that was put into what we gave or what we received could not be put into mere words. The joy that you have, the thoughts that you have, it came from your heart and your hands, and all your family that participated. And my daughter and your granddaughter were best of friends, and it seemed like every time we were turning around, we were always getting together. And thank you for what you've done for our community, what you will continue to do for our community. God bless you. Thank you so very much.
Pleasure.
I had to quit.[440.00][440.00](Audience laughing).
Claude, again, I'll say thank you so much for what you have done for our community, both you and Catherine, and what you continue to do for our community. You mean so much to our community, and we thank you for all you do. I'm gonna read a resolution here just as soon the council adopts it. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall, to adopt Resolution 2237. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2237 honoring Claude Harwood and Harwood Florist. Whereas Harwood Florist has been operating in the community since 1942, first as a tomato plant seller, then as a florist, and whereas thousands of people have received benefit from his talent and skill at generational family weddings, funerals, and special occasions. And whereas Mr. Harwood enjoying providing floral arrangements for First Presbyterian Church for the benefit of fellow parishioners for nearly 70 years. And whereas Mr. Harwood was active in his profession as president of the local FTD District, and later the North Carolina Floral Association. And whereas Mr. Harwood brought pride to Stanley County, competing in design contests sponsored by the organization, and in 1978 won the state, region, and national first-place America's Cup. He then represented the United States in international competition in Melbourne, Australia, who replaced in the top 20 designers from around the world. And whereas Mr. Harwood's reputation and growing prestige caused him to be selected to serve sitting presidents on four separate occasions. And with his wife Catherine decorating the White House at Christmas for Presidents Ford, Carter, Reagan, and George H.W. Bush, and the inaugurations of Presidents Carter and Reagan. And now for, there it be resolved, the mayor and city council of the city of Albemarle recognize and honor Claude Harwood for his lifetime service to the community, his church, the past U.S. presidents, as well as honoring Harwood Florist for bringing beauty and elegance to homes and special occasions for residents of Albemarle and Stanley County for over 70 years. Be it further resolved, the city council of Albemarle hereby adopts this resolution this the 17th day of October 2022.[618.04][618.04](Applause). I'm gonna give you the opportunity to say anything you would like.
I'm speechless. All this honor I sure appreciate, but it all takes the people in the county that's traded with us to do what I have accomplished. And beautiful help, like this right here, all the years, they put up with me all the time.[658.16][658.16](Audience laughing). I know I'll probably get them a hard time, but I appreciate all of them, and I appreciate the opportunities that I have had. It all boils down to the maker upstairs keeping me here this long, to be able to help other people. Thank you.[681.12][681.12](Applause).
I believe one of these ladies has a presentation also. Ms. Baxter? Ms. Baxter, you will make your presentation. Counsel, let's stand in recess for a couple minutes, give everybody a chance to greet Mr. Harwood. Okay, call us back to order. Approval item number three, consider approval of minutes from October 3, 2022, regular meeting.
Overapproval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into our public hearings. The first one is ordinance 2264 to consider an annexation 2205 of 12.77 acre property on Forever Road. I'll ask staff to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. This is AX-22-05, tax parcel 140007. It is a 12.77 acre vacant parcel off of Forever Road, immediately adjacent to the recently annexed property there along Forever Road. The applicant is Golden Terrain LLC. The owner is Loyce Ingold. Right now, the property is owned RA in Stanley County. If it is annexed, they will be requesting R10 general residential district zoning on that. That would, adhering would follow this one. The applicant's statement is residential housing demands are at an all-time high. The proposed property is a logical extension of the existing primary corporate limits with single-family residential. Utilities supplied easily with public water and gravity sewer. Density less than R10 with this cluster design at 3.1 units per acre while preserving large amount of open space and avoiding environmentally sensitive areas. As I mentioned, to the north, the property that was annexed just recently, the larger property there is R10 general residential district. It is surrounded by County RA on all those sides. Sewer and water is not available along Forever Road right now. Sewer will have to be extended from across Highway 52 by the developer, or extended from the adjacent property owner, property following its development. Future land use map classifies this parcel as the county primary and secondary growth area, which are recognized in the Stanley County Land Use Plan 2002, and designates areas where growth and development is encouraged over the next 10 years. I should say that this also does include the Almar, City of Albemarle Land Use Plan from 2008, which also shows this as a growth area. Just to specify what I talked about before, the location of the property, this is the Ingold property, 12.77 acres, right next to the recently annexed Forever Road property, as it was called. Right there as well. Zoning was not changed by county on this one yet, so it does not show up. This would be City R10 right here, adjacent to it. Future land use map, as you can see, this is the designated growth area. Can't really see much on there, but the boundary of it is down here. And there's an aerial of the property as well. City sewer and water are over here. This is the adjacent property that was recently annexed. On August 9, 2022, owner Loyce Ingold and developer applicants, Golden Terrain LLC, delivered to the city a petition for voluntary annexation of 12.77 acres off of Forever Road, same as identified above. Petition was certified by the city clerk August 15, 2022. On Monday, September 19, 2022, city council adopted a resolution to set the public hearing on the matter, and on October 17 tonight, is when it was set for, on October 6, the city planning and zoning board made unanimous recommendation to city council that if the property were to be annexed, that it would be initially zoned in R10. Again, to be considered after this, were this approved. The 12.77 acre City Lake Drive property is a vacant parcel that is contiguous to our current city limits via the Forever Road track that was annexed in February of this year. It is accessed off the Highway 52 frontage road.
That's not...
What did I say?
That's not correct.
That's the one that you mentioned. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah. Councilmember Whitley mentioned that to me earlier. I wasn't sure it was in there. Apologize for that. Forever Road, which terminates at the end of this property, the property being petitioned is currently zoned County Residential Agriculture. The zoning district that is being applied for is City R10. By right, uses in this zoning district are accessory building, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, accessory dwelling units, and residential cluster developments. Manufactured homes are not permitted, however modular homes are. If the property were to be subdivided, the maximum lot yield could be up to 44 single-family lots in a cluster subdivision. This is after they pay 40, a 20% reduction for infrastructure, rights of way, and common areas. This calculation does not include undevelopable or environmentally sensitive areas. While this property is in what the city future land use map deems to be a future growth area, it is largely disconnected from most city services and infrastructure. The property sits at the end of an NCDOT frontage road and is not served by city sewer or water currently. The closest city services are 2,000 to 2,400 feet from the property. If annexed and zoned to R10, the maximum number of units for this property alone does not necessitate a separate traffic impact study, and should not have a substantial impact on traffic by itself. It will, however, potentially impact numbers when added to the proposed adjacent development, and street improvements will need to be consistent with those of adjacent development. Based on its size and distance, development of this property will most likely only be feasible with the development of adjacent property along Forever Road, and this property would be best considered as part of that development, or at least developing coordination. If it is a city's goal to continue with growth in this immediate area, attention should also be paid to other surrounding properties to ensure that opportunities for future development are not lost. The applicant proposes to develop the site with approximately 36 to 40 single-family units. Staff believes the development of the site in R10 is likely to have between 30 and 44 single-family units. This will add between 73 and 106 new residents to Albemarle upon build-out. That's a potential increase of about a half percent or so in our population. Given these numbers, we have made some preliminary calculations. The projected total revenues, based on assumed build-out numbers, development of the property in the city would likely produce a minimum of 61,000 and a maximum of 90,000 in annual revenue for the city. This is combined property tax, sales tax, motor vehicle tax, and power bill tax. Should the property be annexed, it would most likely be directly served by Station 2, Fire Department, Station 2 off of Concord Road. The property is 3.04 miles from Fire Station 2. It's outside of preferred 2.5 road mile response radius, but less than maximums. Response times may exceed city averages. Should a new station be needed for this area, development of this property would need to contribute proportionally to the additional cost. This would likely be around 2,000 to 3,000 in annual expenses over the life of a station would need to be considered. The city of Albemarle Fire Department currently has 2.83 personnel per 1,000 persons in the city. In addition to this, it's expected there will need to be about .21 to .3 new personnel, so not an entire new staff, but it will contribute to the need for an additional person in order to maintain existing numbers and levels of service. The total annual cost to maintain existing levels of service and fire protection with the addition of this development is projected to be 23,278 and a maximum of 34,141. For the police department, there's not expected to be a need for additional police facilities with the increase in population from this development. However, it is expected there will need to be between .22 and .33 new personnel to maintain existing numbers and levels of service. Combined with vehicles, equipment, training expenses, the total annual cost to maintain existing levels would be around 16,000 to 23,500. The projected costs of public work, street division, the current projection for new roads are based upon average for similar development types that we've seen at Albemarle in recent years. Staff believes most likely this development will create between .2 and .3 miles of new local streets. While the additional cost of these streets is borne by the developer, the cost over their lifetime is a liability to the cities. It's expected to cost an annual minimum of 7,000 and a maximum of 10,300 to maintain these streets in good condition. This does not include additional public works, staff, or equipment. Impacts and costs to stormwater infrastructure. Staff does not have any estimates on the impact or cost mitigating stormwater from this development at this time. Runoff, however, will likely develop, will likely impact Rock Creek and Rock Creek Park being in that watershed there. With city electric, sewer, and water being enterprise funds, staff does not have great figures related to the total impact of cost and revenue created by annexing and developing this property, so we would need to go in a little bit more detail on that. We do have some rough ideas on what would be needed here, electrical and water. We do not anticipate major upgrades or extensions to existing service lines. However, this property and others on this side of 52 are all 30 to 70 feet lower than existing service lines on Highway 52. Perhaps there might be gravity-fed sewer to the adjacent property, but at some point there is going to be, need to be lift stations involved, which will have additional expense. Also, necessary sizing on these lines to serve additional growth in the area has not been considered and should be taken into consideration. NCDOT traffic impacts, no traffic impact analysis would be required for development of this property alone. It should be expected that single-family development on the site would add approximately 300 to 440 trips per day to Forever Road and Highway 52. Current figures show a potential net annual surplus in revenues from this development of $13,000 to $19,000 after street maintenance and public safety expenses. As shown, this represents approximately 79% of the projected revenue from this development. No estimates were given for streets division or landfill staff and equipment, parks and rec staff and facilities cost, and cost other internal city services which may need to increase staffing to keep up with impacts of projected growth. Additionally, no costs have been assumed for any infrastructure upgrades or long-term maintenance of utilities or increased demand on utility staff. Those are also important to consider.
Counsel, have any questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Does the applicant want to present next?
Before the applicant speaks, might I just ask them a question because of that typo in the official description? Is that, will that skew, and I think, I don't, I think I know the answer, but will that skew anything with the official notice for tonight?
It wasn't in the notice.
Notice should have been publicized correctly in the paper and to the neighboring property owners, and I think we're on record correcting it to Forever Road, so we're good to go.
Just asking it, and I just wanted it actually...
Yeah, it was only in the staff analysis. The advertisements and everything should be fine.
Very good.
Thank you. Mayor, counsel, name is Michael Sandy, representing Golden Terrain LLC. This project, this 12.77 acres, we acquired to actually make a better project of the land that was mentioned before on Forever Road right north of the property. This makes it a, we work with planning staff to make this project a better project, work out stream crossings, the sewer access, road access. So basically, you'll see one project in the future with 132 acres to the north, plus this 12 acres would be one project at a future time for development. So annexation is the first step, and that's what we would like to request annexation of this parcel, be zoned to R10, and we will come back in with a site plan and work with the planning staff again to bring you a great project.
Counsel, have questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Most of the closed public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Move approval of ordinance 2264.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve ordinance 2264. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number five, ordinance 2265, consider initials zoning rezoning of 12.77 acres on Forever Road from County RA to City R10. Staff, will you introduce?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, counsel. I'm getting this application up here for you. So this is the same applicant as the annexation, so I'm gonna go through some of this pretty quickly, at least up front here. So this is the application, same acreage there, the approximate of 12.77 acres, tax record 140007. And we have the application. The receipt, the notice there. Appended, David Service, the mailed notice. And here's the staff analysis. Tax record 140007, vacant parcels off Forever Road near U.S. Highway 52 South. Same applicants, the proposed initial zoning they would like to have would be R10 general residential district. The statement is the same, residential housing demands are at an all-time high. This property is a logical extension to the existing primary corporate limits with single-family residential. Utilities supplied easily with public water and gravity sewer. Density less than R10 with this cluster design at 3.1 units per acre while preserving large amount of open space and avoiding environmentally sensitive areas. Like we said, it's vacant, and they want to have a cluster subdivision there. It's surrounded primarily by the County RA, except there is existing R10 to the north, which was previously annexed and rezoned. It is in the future land use map, is classified as county primary and secondary growth areas per the Stanley County Land Use 2022 Plan. This is our map that you just seen. The site there is designated, and the previously annexed and rezoned property to the north is also within, inside that yellow box there. The future land use map plan, need to have my little arrow probably about right out there, be a little more accurate if we could move it. And this blue right here is what's been annexed, and it's in the city there to the north, the larger tract, and then in the outline in blue here is the subject tract that we're talking about this evening. Signs posted out there. So all public hearing notice requirements have been met for the October 17, 2022 city council meeting, which is tonight. The applicant intends to rezon this lot to R10 general residential district in order to develop the land as a cluster development with single-family homes. This rezoning would be consistent with the previously approved annexation and rezoning R10 of the 122 plus or minus acres tract adjacent to the north. However, the development to the north has been placed on hold until further notice, which could potentially affect the possibility of sewer and water being extended to the subject tract being rezoned. Although, as we've heard, the project to the north being on hold is the applicant's intention to bring this project together with the project to the north. This property has direct access to Forever Road, which has access on the U.S. Highway 52 South, directly across from the NC 138 intersection. Is it important to consider the future impact of this intersection due to the potential increased traffic flow from other residential subdivision being located on Forever Road? It may be, it may also be...
And this blue right here is what's been annexed and it's in the city there to the north, a larger tract. And then in the outline in blue here is the subject tract that we're talking about this evening. Signs posted out there. So all public hearing notice requirements have been met for the October 17th, 2022 city council meeting, which is tonight. The applicant intends to rezon this lot to R10 General Residential District in order to develop the land as a cluster development with single-family homes. This rezoning would be consistent with the previously approved annexation and rezoning R10 of the 122 plus or minus acres tract adjacent to the north. However, the development to the north has been placed on hold until further notice, which could potentially affect the possibility of sewer and water being extended to the subject tract being rezoned. Although, as we've heard, the project to the north being on hold is the applicant's intention to bring this project together with the project to the north. This property has direct access to Forever Road, which has access on the US Highway 52 South directly across from the NC 138 intersection. Is it important to consider the future impact of this intersection due to the potential increased traffic flow from other residential subdivision being located on Forever Road? It may be, it may also be difficult to determine the long-term effects this rezoning may have on the corridor due to the lack of established commercial use and general guidance from the future land use plan. So while a lack, while a lack of policy and guidance within the future land use plan 2028, R10 General Residential District is consistent with the adjacent tract to the north and the land use plan. Lack of infrastructure to this property, uncertainty to proposed development along Forever Road, and one access point to US Highway 52 South from Forever Road are a cause for concern. However, if annexed, staff believes R10 would be generally consistent. At the September 1st, 2022 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, the board unanimously made a recommendation for city council to approve the initial zoning based on the consistency statement. And I have those available.
Council have questions for staff? Does the applicant want to make a presentation? Council having questions of the applicant? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Would the public be closed?
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to number six, ordinance 2266.
Wait a minute. We did, that was just.
Order 2265, we need to act on that. Motion by Councilmember Drive to approve ordinance 2265. Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, with consistency statement, Mr. Gray.
With the consistency statement.
With the consistency statement, as was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board. Ordinance 2266 to consider zoning six plus acres on Cobal Avenue from City General Highway Business District to City Light Industrial Zoning Map Amendment 2214. Staff, will you introduce?
So we have our application here. Our applicant is Burleson Square LLC in the care of Mr. Joseph Burleson. The property owner is Stanley Construction Realty Incorporated. The property location is 703 Cobal Avenue, and it'll be tax record 6880. And this is the application. The receipt, the notice here. Our affidavit of publication there to the neighbors, our public notice. And our staff analysis. A request by Burleson Square LLC, Joseph Burleson, for a rezoning of approximately six acres of tax record 6880 from General Highway Business District to Light Industrial District. The property for years has been used as a storage for free to lay. With the building and development in and around the city of Albemarle, we have recognized a need for more self-storage facilities. We plan to build a state-of-the-art facility, storage facility with traditional storage and climate-controlled storage. This type of business is needed in the city. So a little bit on the property there, there is automobile sales there at the road on Cobal Avenue, and there's an existing self-storage building at the back of the property, which I'll show you here in a second. And he is wanting to have traditional compartmentalized storage and climate-controlled storage facility there. To the, to the north, we have our R10 General Residential District. To the east, we have R10. To the south, across the highway there, it's LID. And to the west, we have R10 General Residential District and LID Light Industrial District. City water, city water and sewer are available on Cobal Avenue are available to this property. The easternmost side of this, of the said property is located within the regulated floodplain, which I'll show you in a minute. Furthermore, a small portion of the existing storage structure, the northeastern corner, is located within the 500-year floodway that is not currently regulated. So in the future land use plan, the 2028 future land use plan, as generally states this as general residential area, which is for one quarter to one-half acre lot sizes and for low-density developments. Compact residential neighborhoods that set aside significant natural vistas, parkland, and other rural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged within that, within that area. It also has industrial and heavy, industrial and heavy commercial areas that are intended to accommodate traditional industrial uses and commercial uses such as warehousing and addition, and distribution centers on individual tracks or industrial parks. Such uses may have health and safety hazards, smoke, fumes, noises, traffic, or other similar nuisances. Development considerations include adequate access to highways, water, and sewer, and minimizing impacts adjoining uses. So this is our current zoning map. The pink there is your General Highway Business District. You can see to the north and to the northwest, you have some R10 residential. To the west out there, you also have R10. And then to the west, southwest, and south of the property in the gray, you have your Light Industrial District there. This is our future land use map plan for 2028. And you can kind of see it right there at that intersection, there is a little bit of that purple there. That is our industrial area on our future land use map plan. The yellow is the, excuse me, the general residential area. So it does have some industrial area on its, on its property there. So here's the floodway I was talking about, the environmental factors and aerial for you. The green is the 500-year floodway. It does touch the building, like I said, it's not regulated though, so it is okay where it is. And that's really the only thing that we have out there as an environmental impact is the floodplain. This is the rezoning sign, and this is the existing storage structures you see back towards the back of that property there. So for staff comments, all, all public hearing notice requirements have been met for tonight's meeting, October 17th, 2022. The applicant intends to rezon approximately six acres to Light Industrial District to develop the property for compartmentalized storage and meet the demand for self-storage needs. Light Industrial District is defined by the zoning ordinance as being designed to accommodate industries and warehousing operations, which can be operated in a relatively clean and quiet manner, and which will not be obnoxious to adjacent residential and business districts. LID zoning does allow for compartmentalized storage, however, all uses should be considered for this request. While the future land use map designates this site as primarily general residential area, it has a small portion of industrial area near the Cobal Avenue and NC 2427 bypass west intersection. This site is also neighbored by industrial zone areas to the west and to the south per the future land use map plan and the zoning ordinance, which further supports the above requested rezoning. It is important for the applicant to consider, when developing the property, the existing residentially zoned properties to the northwest, north, and eastern boundaries of the property by providing adequate screening per, per industrial development policy directives in the future land use plan. Given the proposed use and existing use on the property, existing adjacent properties to the south and west currently zoned as Light Industrial District, as well as a portion of the subject property being designated as commercial and industrial areas on the future land use map, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's 2028 future land use plan. At the October 6, 2022 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, the board unanimously made a recommendation for city council to approve the initial zoning based on the consistency statement. And I have the consistency, inconsistency in the future land use map statements for you.
Council have questions for staff?
It's, I'd say maybe a quarter, a little bit under a quarter. And if he, if he was, if the applicant was going to develop inside that floodplain, there would have to be floodplain permits applied for. But it's my understanding from the applicant that he chooses not to develop within that floodplain.
Further questions for staff? Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Appreciate your service to Albemarle. Really don't have a whole lot to say, except, you know, we're, we're trying to bring a, expand our business in Albemarle. We've got a facility in Red Cross and one in Locust. And obviously with all the new development that you guys have approved in Albemarle the last few years comes need for storage, and we want to, we want to provide that business here. And we're looking at building a state-of-the-art facility. We'll end up spending a few million dollars here on this property if it's approved. And to answer the question about the flood area, no, we don't plan to do anything down there in that flood area. There's also a major sewer line that comes through there, sewer easement, so we couldn't do anything with it anyways. But I don't know if you all have any questions for me, I'll be happy to.
Looks like you're buying the place where the little house is also. Over the last 40 years, that's been anywhere from a residence to multiple different commercial uses. And some of them have been very unsightly. What's your intentions of that area?
We, we intend right now, the plan is to tear down that house. We have looked at it and potentially could renovate that and maybe use it as the office for the facility. But more than likely, it'll be, it'll be torn down. It's, it's in pretty rough shape.
Council have any questions for the applicant?
Just another, is there another indoor environmentally controlled storage in Albemarle that you know of?
I think the old, is it the old Allison Manufacturing Building? I think they're doing some storage there now, but how many of the, what I'm going to call the traditional sized units that they have? I don't know. I think it's some rather large storage. But we're, we're wanting to do, you know, 10 by 10, 10 by 20, you know, that, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of one.
Yeah. In, in Locust, we've got one, you know, one of our competitors is there in Locust. They have some climate-controlled stuff, and they're out at Midland too. But really, that's the only climate-controlled stuff that we have in the area. And it's, if you're making a move, moving houses, building a new house, you have anything nice to store, I recommend to you stored in climate control. Don't, don't store it in the traditional style stuff if it's of any value to you. And, and I own the traditional style stuff, so.
There are several that have mentioned wanting to do climate control on some of the rezonings we have done. So nothing has taken place yet, but there have been several. Ms. Hall?
Not on this issue, but before, after this issue is concluded, before we start the next, if you'll stand up, I just, I got, I have another question to ask you.
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
Further questions for the applicant? Thank you. Ms. Sue Harms, 615 Cobal Avenue wishes to speak.
Hello, Council. I live at 615 Cobal Avenue, which is two houses down. Initially, a lot of the neighbors were unhappy with what the rezoning would do because it would make more traffic, big trucks. There's enough big trucks and everything else on Cobal Avenue right now. But with, if it is a state-of-the-art, and I have spoken with Mr. Burleson, most of the residents are in agreement that this would be a great improvement, and we really want that house and that is 30 cars gone. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else cares to speak for or against?
Most unclosed public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend. Second by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Council, what's your wishes on ordinance 2266?
Move to approve ordinance 2266 with the consistency statement.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 2266 with the consistency statement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, before you go to seven, might I ask Mr. Burleson to come back up?
Sure.
Just a quick question. Is there still going to be a school at the Burleson Square?
Yes, yep.
Have they started it?
Not yet. We're, we're having to install some handicap bathrooms.
Because I just, somebody asked me the other day, and I said, well, you know, I don't know if it's there or not yet.
We, we've got the bathrooms in, just waiting on county inspections right now. Called in for inspection last Wednesday. They haven't got to me yet unless they got there today.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Number seven, ordinance 2267 to vacate and close order for 209 Ebbin Street. Mr. Ferris, who on staff is going to handle this?
Mr. Robinson is going to review the case, I believe. Thank you, Mayor. These two, you can largely consider this case 209 and 211 together. However, the way the ordinance is structured, we would need a, a separate approval for each one of those. These are in the same property, 209 and 211 Ebbin Street. I apologize that Greg couldn't be here. He has classes for the next few months at night, so I'm going to do my best to present this for him. This is a, an ongoing, we've received complaints on this property for probably about two and a half years now, possibly a little bit longer with several different issues. Utilities being cut off, being tapped into illegally, drop cords being run from one property to the other. There being sewer issues on at least one of the properties, I think potentially on both. There's structural issues, number of other problems with the property, with both of these properties. And what this ordinance, this is not a demolition ordinance, this is a vacate and close, so that it's a hazardous situation right now for anybody to be living in there. This would effectively allow for the police department to enforce this ordinance and make sure that these properties stay vacated right now until the heir to the property or another, another heir is able to get building permits and actually make the repairs that are needed to it. Not going to propose to demolish right now, but potentially years down the road, that may be, that may, may be an option for the city as well.
Is it same property owner for 209 and 211?
Yes, they're on one, they are on one parcel. These were owned by brothers at one point, and so there are sons and daughters involved, cousins involved with it. Right now, I think there's some legal issue with who actually main, who actually has the property. I don't know that it's gone through probate. I know that the, one of the heirs right now is working on that, but that hasn't really been cleared up yet. That's another issue that we have, is that legally, it's very difficult to determine who is responsible for these with the, with the original owners having passed.
So these, these properties don't meet the criteria for demolition?
Uh, I believe, I believe one of them actually probably does meet the threshold for demolition. The other one, it's, it's definitely not one of the worst properties we've had, but in terms of somebody living in it, it is very bad shape. The other one, I think, is going to be probably close to that threshold very, very soon.
So this is more of an immediate thing, safety?
It's a, it's a, it's a life safety thing through minimum housing, yeah.
And just for clarification, the children that was residing have been moved elsewhere out of that dwelling?
I cannot, I, I don't, I cannot answer that for sure. I know that there have been calls with DSS. They would not provide detailed information to that because it is a sensitive topic with, with the children being underage. So I, I believe so, but I don't, I don't know that for certain.
Kevin, is there a, is there a timeframe with the vacate and close to have something done, or does it just continue to drag on?
With the vacate and close, I would have to check with the city attorney, but I believe that after that's approved, after you guys prove that, that the police department can, can enforce that and can require the occupants to, to leave at that point. Now, within reason, of course, we would try to, you know, work with everybody with getting things out that they need to get out, but it would need to be relatively quick.
Yeah. It, I would, if you haven't been by there, you ought to drive by.
I went by tonight.
It's, it's really sad to, to see what's going on and that we have human beings actually staying in that. And it's a sad thing, but I, I don't want it to be dragging on for a long period of time. The, the, I don't know what we can do to the heirs to say, y'all got to make the decision here so that we're not sitting around waiting. The longer we wait, people are going to go in there, and the more it's going to cost us to have the police department going around and, you know, getting them out. At some point in time, somebody's going to get hurt. When I drove through there, I got looks like, what are you doing in my neighborhood? And I was in a work truck.
I didn't know.
A DSS has been involved. We don't really have the details on that case.
Enter.
Well, they're not going to, they're not, unfortunately, they're not going to release all that information to us. I mean, we've got, and I think we provided some record of.
Kevin, in the packet, it says, DSS advised they had relocated at least three families with children from this. Kevin, in the packet, it says, um, DSS advised they had relocated at least three families with children from this unsafe del. And that's two oh nine.
I don't, and I don't know, yeah, on two oh nine, I don't know what the situation is now. I don't know if they've gone back in. There's been a lot of moving out, moving in.
Yeah.
Um, uh, Greg, Greg gave me some updated pictures from last, from last week where he went by and there was, uh, the, the garage was open and it looked like there was a cot or a bed of some sort that was down there. Somebody was staying in that at that time as well, so. I'm sorry, yeah. I, I... It's not irrelevant, but I don't, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's, it's an absolute necessity to the case. Uh, we've got life safety issues that are going on with the property. Right. Yeah, and, and I, I mean, I, I understand. I don't, we asked DSS for more information. They, they are not gonna provide it because the children are, uh, underage. They can't provide us details on those cases.
They're not gonna provide it to us if we end up having to do court or legal proceeding.
It could be brought up then, but they, they're very careful with how they divulge that information. Um, right. But we've had, we've had multiple, uh, police reports. Um, there's been multiple reports from public utilities with, uh, theft of, uh, illegal tampering and illegal tapping into utilities. Um, and Greg has, um, I, I don't even know how many visits out here where he's observed ongoing and worsening, um, living conditions and, um, the, uh, minimum housing, uh, conditions continuing to get worse.
And there's no water, there's no water electric?
Very poor.
Mm-hmm, right.
And they can't let it, uh, I mean, they can't let it out, they can't provide it for...
Right.
But I, I think it's three, another, in the report, that we, we need to, at least hold off and see if there's any absolute information. I'm getting a referral to you, that's...
Right, and I understand that. I mean, I, I think, I think alone, based on the, um, uh, the information provided, the pictures, the reports from, uh, from, from Greg, from staff, uh, I, I think on that alone, the minimum, the minimum housing, uh, violations, that right there, whether they're children, whether they're adults, nobody should be living in those conditions.
Well, there's no water, sewer, or electric?
That's right, yeah. I believe everything is off right now.
So I think what council's being asked tonight is to pass ordinance or consider ordinance twenty-two sixty-seven to close and vacate, right? Two oh nine?
Yep.
And two eleven.
And then, yeah.
Two and nine.
I, I make the motion.
No, 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 no.
We're still in public hearing.
Oh, we're still in public hearing, okay.
Further questions or staff?
Is this the first time we utilize this process? Cause I don't recall it was seen.
All right, it may have been done in the past, but my, my staff has not, has not done it recently. It's not something we really, I, I think is preferable, uh, to do a whole lot. I mean, we, we prefer to try to work with the property owner, uh, to fix their, their properties up and everything while they're, you know, while they're in violation, but this has been going on for a number of years. It's, it's becoming a major problem over there. It's already a major problem over there, um, for several different apartments in the city, for those that are living there, for the neighbors as well, so.
And the reason I ask this is because I know some other properties throughout the city
Sure.
have, have, uh, we've had similar concerns
Yeah.
from neighbors.
And it very well likely may be something that we have to utilize more. We, we would use it, prefer to use it rather sparingly, but it may be something that has to be used in the future as well.
This is a public hearing. I have one more that wants to speak, uh, or another one that wants to speak. And I'm sorry, I cannot read the last name. I believe the first name is Rob. You wanna come up here? Two oh nine Eben Street.
Um, the owners of the property is my father and my uncle. My grandmother bought these properties, I think nineteen years ago. So these are family properties. Like, they've been in my family for, you know, a long time. I'm not, by no means an upstanding citizen, but, um, they're still my homes. Um, the code violation, it's their own one parcel, but two different addresses in two boxes. So, the two eleven is my...
Speak into this, so we can hear you. Thank you.
The two eleven is my uncle's home, uh, the Cecil Eugene. And Elton Snap, the two oh nine, is where I grew up all my life. Um, the two eleven is in really, really bad, um, condition. Uh, when, when I started this about two and a half years ago, um, uh, it was full of stuff to the ceiling. I've got it almost completely cleaned out. It was a lar- large job because, you know, I'm very, very, um, I have very few funds to be able to do this, so I've had to literally put the trash beside the road or do, do whatever means possible to get this full house of stuff out. Um, in the last two years, I've gotten the house almost completely cleaned. I've tried boarding up windows. But, um, the violations on two oh nine with the plumbing and the, um, power, they've both been completed with permits and the inspectors come out and cleared them. So, the only reason I can't get my power on at this time is because my father is deceased and both properties have six thousand back taxes. So, um, which I went and talked to the tax lady and the tax lady, um, told me that they're not even showing delinquent in the system. Of course, they're, they are delinquent, but they're not showing it. So, um, as far as that goes, I'm just, um, trying, gonna try my best to pay it off. But until the tax, I'm short, till the taxes get paid off, I cannot switch the owners. Um, you can't change a deed until your, um, houses are up to, up to date in ta- um, taxes. They won't let you put the deed on anyone else's names. I originally went and got quick claim deeds from my mother and my cousin to try to successfully do this so I could try to get everything, um, for two eleven, um, and two oh nine properly done, um, at, for, for, um, the county or sheriff's department, whoever. Um, my sister, the DSS case, um, that was involved, what, my sister's never lived in the home. Um, so she would be over there helping me with stuff because I'm doing this all by myself. And, um, DSS, my sister's never made a statement that she's lived in the home. So, um, I don't understand, uh, why they even got involved, which that's not a big issue either. Um, the power issue, the power issue is the county, I got, I got my permit saying that I spent eighteen hundred dollars fixing my, um, uh, my, uh, the wire, you know, the power issue, um, the wiring system so I could get my power turned on. I can't get my power turned on because Albemarle Power Company said the deed needs to be in my name. Can't get the deed switched. Either my dad's father's name or my name, so I pay up the taxes. So, even though I fixed the plumbing and I fixed the power, which is the code violation on two oh nine, I can't get power on until, I think, I went up there just a couple days ago and the lady said if I put an air over my father's property, um, that they would let the air turn the power. So that's what I am in, trying to do right now, two oh nine, is to pay the hundred and twenty dollars and put that air over my property so I can hopefully get the power turned on because I've done everything I'm supposed to do and they're saying I can't turn on my power. What, what is confusing to me though is two years ago, when I, me and my mother took my...
Stay at the microphone, please.
Um, two years ago, when me and my mother took my cousin to court to get two oh nine back in her possession, they let my mom turn on the power then, when my dad was deceased and when there was back taxes. So I'm not sure what happened and it's not an argument or, you know, of the situation. I just, I, I, two years ago, I got it turned on in my mother's name just fine with my dad being dead and there being back taxes. So now all of a sudden, now that I've got everything fixed, I still, I, they won't let me turn my power on. I had the money. There's no structural issues to two oh nine. I have every window in my home is, um, in, in where it needs to be. There's no floor damage. There is no, there is nothing structural wrong with two oh nine at all. And downstairs, where my brother about ten years ago built a flimsy wall, I have tore everything out downstairs that isn't originally to the house and foundation, you know, when they built the house. So there's no half-done structures downstairs, um, as, as we speak at two oh nine anymore. So as far as I know, there is, it, there's nothing that should be, the codes on or there's no violations at two oh nine at all anymore with the two permits that had been, um, pulled, things had been fixed and the inspector, um, came out and approved it. Two eleven, I am still working on that. I'm trying to demolate, demolition the whole house down. I don't plan on keeping it. It is a little bit far gone. Greg asked me to bo- board up the windows. I've done, started on that. No one, I don't let anyone on the property other than myself or the people that is helping me fix these problems. Um, and really, until about two years ago, no one was calling, um, and complaining and, you know, so I don't understand what's, you know, what happened then. But also, the, the calls and complaints, um, about the, the power issue or, you know, someone said, uh, he, he had mentioned that there was a couple calls and complaints about power being run illegally. I called because my cousin next door in her house was breaking into my home and running my power. So I cut off the power to my home. So, you know, there's no power bill or anything. I cut it off because I called the police and the police come out there and they cut the cords, seeing that she had cords running, but really didn't do nothing about it. So I took it upon myself to come up here and cut my power off on two oh nine. So my cousin and the people that was, you know, going in and out of the house wouldn't steal my power. So I was the complaint of this, you know, her stealing my power, um, to, from my house at two oh nine. They're on one parcel, so, um, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know the laws that when it comes to stuff like that, but it's, the twenty years that we've owned them, it's always been two oh nine is a different property from two eleven. And, you know, my family's lived at two oh nine and my cousin's family's lived at two eleven. I can't help that my uncle was a hoarder. I'm trying my best to try to get this, you know, taken care of and situated. My dad's been dead six years, so we didn't have any, um, loans or mortgages out on the house, so there was no need for an heir. But I guess because two eleven, um, whatever's going on with my, you know, with my cousin in two eleven, she has an heir over her property or whatever, now my property's getting tied up into these problems. I have fixed everything I could. Um, it was, um, the violations on my house, there's no, no more violations that I know of that, that is thrown on my house, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, explain to me again, who lives in two oh nine?
As of, as of right now, I, for the last two days, I have been there because I knew we had this, this, um, meeting and I, um, been trying to get the, the walls downstairs just torn out, which I don't think was an actual, uh, code violation. But I just wanted to make sure that was done because I knew that Greg had some concerns. I've been in contact with Greg Morris, um, through this whole process. So, um, as of right now, nobody lives on either properties.
Nobody lives on, no one?
No, I'm just there doing what I need to do for, for this.
Okay.
Further questions, counsel? Done? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I turned the power off. I called the power company. I, I can tell you right here, cause I, I've, I've got the warrant where I took charges out on my cousin. I took, I did every step that I needed to do for that and took charges out on her for, for ta- um, doing it. So if you give me just one second, I'll have that and I can tell you exactly the date of it. But, um, it hasn't, it's been, I think about four months. Hold on one second. Okay, so this is... Somewhere around five two, I turned, I called the power company and had them turn it off with no outstanding bill.
May second of this year?
Yeah, five, five, two, two two.
Okay, five, okay.
There's no children in the home. No, ma'am. There, there was one child, Jordy, my nephew, that is my sister's child. Somehow, um, DSS, I guess thinks she was staying there, but my sister was not staying there. My sister at the time had a DSS case opened and she did not want the person that she was staying with. She had kids. She did not want her to have to be involved. And so she would not tell DSS where she was living. So I guess DSS, their protocol is to go with the last address or, you know, wherever. And I guess they... We were raised there. I'm only thirty-four. My sister's ten years younger than me. I think she moved there when she was three. So, yes.
Further questions, counsel? Um, ma'am, do, do I understand you to say that all the improper wiring that is observed in the pictures and the plumbing, every, every bit of that has been repaired?
Yes, sir. Um, if, if I may?
No, I, I believe, I just wanna clarify.
I have the two signed off, uh, work permits that I pulled for the plumbing and for the electrical and they both was expected by the county inspector and they both were approved. We spent eighteen hundred dollars fixing the wiring system in two oh nine where my cousin, um, in two eleven was, was just trashing, uh, my home as well as, you know, of course...
What's the date on that?
Uh, the date on the, the electrical was... Hold on one second. May fifth twenty-two was for the plumbing. The electrical was last year, I'm sure. March one, twenty twenty-one is when we had the, um, the, uh, electrical repairs done.
And just for the record, when did we receive some falsified documents from, from one of the property owners? As a, as a city, at some point, we received some documents that were not legitimate.
What kind of documents? These are the documents that are not falsified that are done. So, and I've not seen no, not seen or heard any falsified documents.
Okay, um, Mr. Robinson, um, the notice for unsafe building condemned, they have a date of September sixth, two thousand twenty-two. If we move forward tonight, will we be placing something different from exhibit B? Which say unsafe building condemned per general statute? Or what? I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for what action will take place that is not already implemented, you know?
Yes, this is a vacating close. It's, I mean, it is, it, it kind of functions as condemned, but it's not, we're not calling for demolition or for removal at this time. Uh, it's just to keep the property closed up and keep people from living in it. Uh, of course, we would absolutely work, um, um, within this foresight, um, on, uh, on making repairs and everything as needed to get in there, uh, to make the repairs. Um, trying to figure out. Are you talking about the, uh, the actual ordinance itself?
Nah, I, we got a, I guess, um, we had an exhibit, exhibit B, it's a unsafe building condemned.
Okay, yeah.
Two oh nine Eben Street with the parcel identification number and dated September sixth, two thousand twenty-two by order of the City of Albemarle Planning and Development.
So Councilmember Townsend, that date will be updated to the date of the kind of approval of council, so that will be October seventeenth and we'll also file this at the register.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So that'll be updated.
Okay, I see. It was dated for September, but we end up hearing, yeah, I got you. Yeah, sorry about that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Further questions, counsel? Okay, thank you. I have a, uh, Shonda, are you, are you through this fourth line?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess, that's, that's all y'all wanna know.
Okay, I have a Shonda, I think it says Span, two twelve Eben Street wishes to speak. Have two on there, I do.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Speak up, please, ma'am. Closer to the mic, please.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Yes, I own the home on two twelve Eben Street. I am directly across from both of these properties. They are in dire straits. They're not livable. They have more drug activity in there than probably half of Stanley County. Um, they have people living from the, what they call the compound that is off of Second Street, First Street. It's behind the Olympia Gas Station. Everybody migrates from Olympia, from behind Olympia over to two oh nine and two eleven. They have been taking the wiring out of this. They have been taking the wiring out of those houses. They were skimming copper wire today. I actually have surveillance of that because I have surveillance on my property. Because I am afraid to leave my home. My children cannot go outside to play. I am a foster parent with Stanley County DSS. I have two small children in my home. One is 15 months old, the other one is four. They cannot go outside in my yard to play because of so much activity across the street, up and down the street all times of night. They're fighting. Drug dealers are migrating on the road whenever they're there. They have moved back into the house. Ms. Forsythe and her friend have moved back in the house. They've been there since Thursday. I have surveillance of that too when they moved in. It's just, it's horrible. It's horrible. I mean, it, it needs to be shut down. My family will not even come and visit and stay overnight because they don't want to leave their vehicle in the yard. They're scared it goes, someone's going to break into it. I constantly, I'm up all night. I've taken depression medicine now because I don't get rest, just so I can sleep. I'm up all night watching what's going on, making sure no one's tampering with my things because they have tampered with my vehicle before. They scratched my vehicle. Lining my car all the way around with nails, all because we got into an argument over a cat. They call me names. I've been the N-word numerous times. We've almost come out into the street, you know, drawing, drawing blows. I just, I can't take it. I, I really want them gone because the house is not livable. No one should live there. Her sister was living on the property with that child. They have since moved that child. And I am glad they did because he was not in a safe place. Things were going on and they know it. And for someone to just stand here and blatantly lie to you guys, I don't, I, I don't condone that. I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry. It's going to make them mad. They may retaliate. I'm sorry, but I have to say what I have to say because I own my property. And for me to be, to feel unsafe in my own yard, that's a problem for me.
Mr. Pryor, you want to speak too?
Greetings, Mayor, Counsel. I just want to add a few things. No one wants to be unsafe and unwanted condition, no one in here at all, let alone directly across your home. It's very uncomfortable. So it's better to call the police for them, on them, than to be called on myself. The racism that we display, that we receive, I've been a witness of what's been going on since our involvement for two plus years. And I work Stanley County. Sometimes I work in New York. So I'm away to go to work in China Grove Salisbury area. 55 minute drive to get a call two minutes before I pull up at work. She's been propositioned from someone, brings so much anger and chills to my body. It's, it's very unwanted. The traffic, drugs, the people doesn't live there. To see the traffic, see the condition of people they bring. I'd leave at 4:30, 4:45 and three and four vehicles coming around that do not belong on our neighborhood. It's a home of 10, 11 homes and they have more traffic than all the other residents there combined in a half a day's time. I'm being held against for remodeling our home, upgrading our home because why? If we have to live across from something like this, it's not going to generate us to be happy at all. And the very impact is just the unsafe, the unsafeness of what they traffic and, and whoever, I don't know who they are to them, brings to our, to our community. And again, it's directly across the street. I don't think, no one wants to walk out of their homes, one in the afternoon, four in the morning, eight at night. I'm an outdoor person. I like to sit outside. But to witness all this cussing, fighting, drug activities, traffic and call you guys, well, the police numerous times where they can be somewhere else because we don't want to be threatened by folks that don't even live in our community, driving on our property, just vulgar. Very racism, racism is shown again. All I would like to say is, is just very unwanted. It's unsafe. Our children can't be there. We have babies. We don't want our kids to be threatened anymore. So we just want it done with. I'm quite sure you would feel the same if you had to come out of your home, get in your car, keep an eye on your vehicle, your property all night long, just to be told and listened to and lied to about, no one's here. No, we have pictures from right before coming here, showing activity and traffic going to the home. So put yourself in our shoes and you will be very, very upset and disgusted about what goes on with the activity level across the street from our home. I would like to say thank you for the time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against on item number seven? No, we have two different public hearings. Okay.
Hey, I live at 213 on Evans Street. What? I'm Paul Ox nine and I live at 213 Evans Street. I witnessed everything they're saying too. I mean, you get woken up in the middle of the night and it is a hassle too. The fire trucks and everybody out there is either someone's OD, they're out there fighting, some kind of stupid crap. I mean, we've had altercations to where she's threatening to burn down my house with my kids living in my home. It come out of her mouth. She's propositioned my dad saying that she would screw him for a hundred dollars and it'd be the best thing for him. And she's just a hassle. It's always some nasty, negative dumb crap there. Like she said, you know, with the kids thing, I gotta keep them in the house. There's been times my kids walked up on a used needle because they just throw them out there in the street. It's just not safe at all. It's uncalled for. I mean, if you're a mother yourself and you have kids, then you wouldn't want your kids to go through that. And it's just a big, I'm trying not to cuss, hassle. I'm going to put it cleanly. It's, it's just a hassle. It's annoying. What you understand?
I'm Cody Dodge. I'm her fiance. I've been with her.
Come closer to the mic, please.
I'm her fiance, Cody Dodge. I don't live there, but I'm there every day because we have a two-year-old daughter. She just turned two today and she has come across multiple needles and not just needles, but all sorts of trash and debris and has actually accidentally played in sewage that has come from that house. And we had told them about it, but they don't care to do anything about it. You get woken up in the middle of the night by people arguing and running around in the street, throwing stuff at cars, throwing stuff at the houses. You hear all types of unruly noises coming from those houses. And you can just drive by those houses and see that they are not in a livable condition. You can go there right now. Those windows are not boarded up. They've just been breaking out the glass and there's glass everywhere.
We witnessed the wiring thing earlier.
They, people come out all hours of the night. There's like they mentioned, a bunch of drug traffic and the people that drive up and down that street do not care. They don't pay attention. They'll park right in the middle of the street. When I have to get up to go to work in the morning, I have to drive around them into another neighbor's property to just to get to work because they just park in the street. They've been asleep in their cars. They passed out in the street. It's just, and this also goes for 211. It's just, it's ridiculous. And the complaints have been going on for four years, since I have been in a relationship with her back in November of 2018.
I've lived on there, going on seven years. I've been on every street, going on seven years.
And for us to not be able to have our kids out in the street playing, because like I said, we have a two-year-old daughter, but she has three older boys. And for them not to be able to go outside and play is ridiculous. If they do, we have to keep them in our carport because we can't even let them out into the little section of our yard because there's just trash and you never know.
Back in talking about, oh.
And they also, yeah, they see drug deals. They. Yep, they'll, they'll sit out there and do the drugs while the kids are outside. So we can't even let our kids outside.
No respect at all.
It's, it, something really needs to be done about these properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure, come back up right quick.
Besides being recorded, which I don't care. I'm not afraid of retaliation. But I forgot to mention, we have witnessed the residents in both of those homes at times using the bathroom outside, even a little child as well. I don't know if this, the kid that was spoke upon with the DSS allocations, but we have witnessed them using the bathroom outside, using it, trying to bathe, so on and so forth. And I wouldn't want to be in that position at all, let alone to put a child into it. That's all I wanted to mention that I forgot when I first approached.
Thank you.
So again, thank you.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close public hearing. It is.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, closed public hearing. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That's the way we would do ordinance 2267.
Motion to appro.
Yes, ma'am. That was to close the public hearing. We just closed the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Now, now we're going to act on ordinance 2267.
To vacate and close 209 Evans Street, so moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember, who was it? Townsend, further discussion?
Either one, as long as it gets set.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to number eight, ordinance 2268, vacate and close order for 211 Evans Street. Counsel, you have just heard all of the information. Staff, can you briefly summarize that?
Yes, this is the other property, the property to the, the east. And the one that Ms. Forsythe's cousin or sister lived in for a while. I, I think proper procedure would probably be to at least open up public comment.
Yes. This, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, and this will be 211 Evans Street. Yes, ma'am?
And this is the cousin's property, right?
So 211.
Speak, if you can, the mic. Speak into the mic.
211 is getting tore down completely. That's why all the wires and everything was getting stripped today. Everything getting taken out of the house, getting ready to take the house completely down. So y'all, so my houses cannot get taken or, you know, whatever. So yes, I'm so, you know, the, the vacate order is wonderful because now if I see someone on the properties, I can call the police and the police, police can escort them off. There's not supposed to be nobody on the properties but me, either fixing the problems or demolishing the other house, 211 to get it fixed. So, and as far as I know, this is a safety issue, you know, for the homes and not if someone likes me or doesn't like my family. So that, you know, to me, that's what should be the issue is fixing the problems to these houses. It's been in my house, my family 20 years instead of if my neighbors dislike me or not. I mean, I don't, I'm trying very hard to get 211 completely tore down to the ground and 209 is completely fixed. When Greg gets the time this week, he'll come out here. He will definitely let me know that it's fixed and I'm just not going nowhere unless I decide to sell my properties. You know, but thank y'all very much for doing the vacate orders. So I can call the police if somebody's there. That's a, that's going to be a big help with me keeping down people that ain't supposed to be there and getting these places fixed properly. So I can keep my homes, you know, that they've been in my family, you know, for a long time. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
I, I have a question of staff. We, I'm sorry, Kevin, just, just for clarification and you may have said this on the first one. Who act, I know those two men are the actual owners of those two houses. Is that correct?
Correct. The last owner of record.
Okay, and both of them are deceased? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So, um, there's not, when you go to look it up, that's who you see on there?
Right.
That's who owns it?
Right.
No heirs, no anything?
Uh, no, I believe it's still the original owners.
So it would be interesting, and I'm looking at Britt now. It's interesting if both of them are deceased, if they're, if it is in an estate. I'm just thinking broadly.
Right, so we did perform a title search a couple of months ago, back when this process was initiating, just to see who owned the property and who Greg needs to be talking to. At this point, the estate is still being administered and I think they're on the title search about a half a dozen heirs and it's split in multiple fractions. But since there hasn't been a definitive one person being the executor and control of everything, that's kind of why we can't move forward with like a demolition or anything because we don't know who is the responsible party. In addition to that, the properties have dozens of liens and judgments against them. And so that kind of puts the city in a position to where if we demolish, then it will be low priority and who would pay the other lien holders off. So this is the, kind of the next step to hopefully close them, eliminate the life safety issues. And in the future, once the estate gets administered, which I believe I've heard that they're working with an attorney on, we can come back and hopefully either have the properties in a better condition or figure out how to proceed with a demolition.
Thus the reason I asked that question, since we do not have a definitive answer as to who owns them currently. Because if both are deceased and there is an estate open, then it's not been determined. So we don't know who owns them first. Number two, am I correct in the understanding? If we do the same thing with this property as we did with the other property, that's no one on the property?
That is no one, not even owners. The, if they're wanting to fix the property, they will have to coordinate that with code enforcement. So they're aware of someone's going to be on the property on a specific day so they can let APD know not to arrest that person. But it goes for anyone, not necessarily, you know, an allowance for the owners and excludes everyone else, but anyone on the property.
So vacate and close means no one on the property. Okay, I'm just trying to.
Right. As, as, as Britt said, and Ms. Forsythe has gotten some, some, some small permits done in the past for a couple of things. I'm not sure what the exact conditions of those are, but if there's a valid permit, we have a licensed contractor who's insured that's going in there to do the work. Then, you know, by all means, we would work with her to, to see if that was done. But it's not, other than that, really, nope. The only, only reason for anybody to be in there right now would be to do permitted work.
And I guess I go back to, there's not really an owner established on either of them if it's in an estate. We don't have, I mean, it's the heirs.
And it's, it's, we have this problem with a lot of properties.
I know, I know.
This will be effective immediately or?
Would be effective immediately. I don't know. We hadn't really talked about in terms of enforcement on this. If it's something that we would work with PD to give the owner time to get things out or if it's just immediate, I'm, I'm not sure how much flexibility we have on that, Britt.
So counsel can do the action tonight. If there wants to be an allowance for some sort of grace period, if the party wants to go in in the next couple of days to retrieve some items, we can make that allowance and make enforcement by APD of the order starting in a, at a future date. If you want to offer some leniency, if they need some last minute items out of.
Well, it looks like within the body of 2268, section one, it, it gives a date.
So obviously before counsel approves it, we can consider it a draft. So if that's something that you want to say this is effective next Monday or whatever date certain, we can revise the orders if that's what counsel chooses to do.
Okay, I guess I would say that if we've already passed one, did it have the date of October 31st in it as well?
More than likely it did.
Okay, so then we've already determined a date.
Okay, and that's.
I mean, if it was in here, I'm just saying.
Did it say October 31st?
2268 says, "The owner of such building premises hereby ordered to vacate any occupants and or personal property there owner before October 31st, 22." Now that is for 2268. I, I have it pulled back up 2267. But that's what's in this, what looks like it's before.
Yes, yes. Owner of such building, yeah, vacate there and, okay, yeah. And that's, I mean, that, that is, you know, it would be up to counsel if you want to change that date, make that sooner. But that's usually pretty standard with most of this stuff is that we try to give two weeks for people to do what they need to do.
Notice it, yeah. As you said, that's plenty of time to get it out. I agree.
Again, that's the reason I wanted to make sure everybody realized what was being done.
Anyone else care to speak for or against? Just a minute.
Same thing applies, but there is one other thing. There's no hostility toward these people. I don't have a love hate relationship for them. I don't dislike them. I dislike their activity. Because of the fact that I have fostered children, they see all this. I have a 17-year-old daughter who sees all of this. She has helped left home because she don't want to see that. Since they have come back on the street, my daughter left home. She's 17. She shouldn't have to leave her place of residence because of the people in the, on the street. And as for July 8th of 2022, Ms. Forsyth actually had a OD. She OD'd on the property of 209 Ebbene Street. They had uh fire and rescue out there and everything. There's been numerous uh ODs in that, on that property since I've lived there. And I moved in my property on June 21st of 2019. So that's three years that I've been there, so yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got one more question, Ms. Forsyth? All right, counsel, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay.
You against?
Miss, one, one against. Ordinance 2268, counsel, what you want to do with it?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hughes to pass ordinance 2268, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, one against. Counsel, I have no agenda adjustments under announced delegations. That party will not be here with us tonight for number nine. Move to administrative reports, number 10, uh, we have a sickness in that department that will not be occurring tonight. So I'll move on to number 11, quarterly strategic plan progress update. Mr. Paris?
So mayor, city council, uh, as we're all aware, the city council adopted the city's strategic plan in May of 2022. And uh since that, then part of the strategic plan calls for quarterly updates. So uh that's the intent of this presentation tonight. And what I've distributed to you is the quarterly update that I'm going to review. It is also double sided, so just note that there's something on the back. Um, the council probably last discussed or really heard um more frequently about the strategic plan when it was adopted in May. And then also during the budget presentation, there was quite a bit of uh connection made during my presentation to the strategic plan. Uh, the plan became in effect July 1st. So the end of October is the date for, I'm sorry, the end of September uh was the end of the first quarter. So uh the intent is just to provide an overview of a check in point as to where things stand. So I'll review the report. First of all, it starts with our goals. If you recall, we had five goals, which are organizational capacity, safety and security, infrastructure, community economic growth opportunities and inclusive community engagements. So since the implementation of the strategic plan, um, while there's not been a lot of discussion at the council level, there's been a tremendous amount of work at the staff level to organize uh the tracking of the 42 established tactics for this coun- for this year. It had to be tracked by multiple parties, um, system set up for everyone to enter and update so that it could be consolidated into a city report. And so uh that sort of work and the development of those forms and processes had to be established. And that's been quite a bit of work that has taken place to this point that then allows the information to be gathered and put into the strategic plan, uh quarterly report. So that is the point of where we are now. You can see that the overwhelming majority of the 42 tactics are in some phase of uh evaluation or implementation. And uh what I'd like to do is take a moment to highlight some of the success stories and uh items of note from where we stand at this point in the year. Uh organizational capacity, uh we have completed the implementation of a lower cost health plan for employees with dependents uh with the transition to med cost. We've increased our staff support and growth with the filling of the newly created assistant fire chief position, risk and safety officer position, and IS system business analyst, as well as some restructuring in the utilities department in the customer service area. And we've also provided citywide training on the new performance management system. For the goal of safety and security, we purchased new uh body cameras in the police department and implementation is ongoing. The fire department is currently reviewing uh their policies, procedures for alignment with potential accreditation and best practices in the fire department. We've had a preliminary design and submission of a funding request for another round of safety and security improvements for the city hall. With an uh infrastructure goal, we've uh made the purchase of the AMI meters and the order has been placed. We've also secured an order of pad mount transformers to make sure we have available inventory. The stormwater management plan was revised at council's request and presented. We've also submitted grants uh seeking stormwater funding, water and sewer system study, and multiple water and sewer infrastructure grant applications have been developed and submitted. Within the goal of feeding and economic growth opportunities, the Admiral Business Center, as we all know, is under construction and ongoing. And electric materials have been purchased and bids received for the installation of those material, of those items for the electric installation at the Admiral Business Center. And then finally, under the goal of inclusive community engagement, a police department has conducted two coffee with a cop events. We've conducted food truck Friday events each month of uh this quarter. And Parks and Recreation has participated and helped in organizing the back to school bash at the Ewaddell Community Center and participated in uh elementary PTA night. So those are just some highlights, some activities to note. We try to keep you all informed very well of things that happen throughout the year. But this plan requires a, calls for a quarterly update. And so we want to take this opportunity to highlight a few items. There are several more activities that are undertaken. And again, those are shared in various manners throughout the quarters, throughout the year. But these are just some of the things that we want to highlight uh to this point is uh follow through on the, on the strategic plan. So uh that's where we stand at this point. I've spoken with David Pfaff, our public information officer, and we're gonna, just want you to take this information and begin rolling it out to the public just to let them know that um as part of this process that was developed beginning of a, through a community survey and citizen input, that uh, you know, we are following through on what we said we were going to work to achieve based on their input. And so that process will start shortly and uh we'll provide regular updates in that manner as well. That concludes my comments on this strategic plan quarterly report.
Thank you. Questions come, Mr. Counsel?
Um, just a couple, basically, talking about the med costs. Uh, I know when that was first rolled out, we were talking about, there was some mention about a wellness program. Has the wellness program been started or have we got something worked on that? I mean, I don't know if I've asked you, Michael, or asked Dana. That was a biggie because when COVID hit, our wellness sort of went straight down, so.
Right, so one thing we've begun to do is, we had a meeting with our broker, One Digital, with the med cost team and actually some folks from Atrium. And we're talking about a three way partnership, possibly even considering a clinic on site. Um, we're waiting for some additional information back from them. And I actually, I have a meeting at the fire department tomorrow to talk about those physicals and expanding that effort. So we have some ongoing conversations, but nothing has been formally defined as yet.
Okay, so wellness, I mean.
It's, it's, it's definitely part of our strategic planning and the tactics for this year.
Thank you.
So as we go along in this quarterly reports, you know, these projects will progress and there'll be updates concerning those. And those will be part of our regular check ins.
Thank you.
So I just, it says here there are 42 approved. It might be helpful, you know, if we had the list of the 42 maybe to know, you know. I know these are some of them, but I don't remember, I personally don't remember the 42 that we approved, I guess. Just this kind of a, as a reference point, I think.
Okay. And the, and the tactics, just as a reminder, the tactics are the action items.
Right.
We committed to implement during the fiscal year to further the goals and the strategies of the strategic plan.
Right, right.
There's, there are 42 and I'll provide a reminder.
Okay, I think that would be helpful.
Number 12, departmental monthly reports are in your agenda, question?
I have just one and I don't know if Dana wants to, she mentions, well, we just covered the citywide training on the performance management system. So when, when are we going live? When, when is it going to be used actually?
It's live now, it's live now. Um, uh, we, we did our training with all the supervisors and all staff. And so right now, um, journal entries are already going into the system. And by the end of October, every employee within the city should have a minimum of two goals. And so those are being input now. Um, and then our mid-year check in will happen in January of 2023. And the actual first, you know, formal evaluation will be done by June 15th of 2023.
So you're saying each employee then by June?
Yes.
Okay, next June will be all evaluated.
Yes, we did go ahead, like I said, we're going to have that mid-year check in in January. Some of our departments want to do more frequent check ins and we're encouraging and supporting them in that. We'd love to get to quarterly, but this first year, we're going with a, a mid-year check in.
Okay.
So stay there.
Okay.
We're, I'm on HR, this is not pick on HR, but this is just where we are. We're at nine months at the end of September and I've had 10% basically, 10 and a half percent resignations a year. Um, I have been asking at some point over and over, not necessarily the answers of exit interviews, but numbers of folks who, who go through an exit interview either face to face or if they opt to do the one online. I just think it's important and I would like to know some of the reasons folks are leaving in their own words.
Sure.
Okay, I just, I think it's.
And a lot of them just do the checkboxes, they don't put the comments, and then some of them do. So um, you know, we can discuss the best way to provide that information to you because we have a pretty large bank of that data.
Okay, and I would, I mean, and would like to know the numbers who were checkboxing versus having face to face.
Um, we're not getting the face to face.
Are they offered?
Rarely.
Are they offered?
Yes, the last question on the exit interview says, would you like a face to face? And if you do, you know, check it and we'll schedule that. I think we've had one in the past six months that elected to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, number.
Wait a second, I still have a question about another um departmental report. I don't see public housing here.
They're not here.
Excuse me?
No, I was going to say it's in here.
Oh, I know it's in here, but I, I know it's in here, paid attention to that, but would like to have an update. And Michael, you might be able to give us, I know the last time we were here, two weeks ago, we were supposed to have placed the family in, of five in the, I mean, those things were supposed to have happened. Do you know if any of that has occurred?
I have not been advised that the family of five has moved in and the changeovers have been made to what was the Family Life Center. Dr. Scott and I have our regular check in um on Wednesday of this week.
So do you know any, I mean, I see it says that the sewer work has begun on those six or eight, but do we have a, any possible day to finish? Do we know?
No.
I'd, I'd like to, whenever you have that, I'd like to know what's going on with that.
Yeah, that, I don't know if you recall, um, but at the last meeting, I noted that this would be, you know, one meeting per month, um, updates on some of these issues. So uh we had that, I think at the last meeting, so the first meeting of the month, uh, the first meeting of November, that topic will be back on the agenda.
I don't know if I remember that, I usually do pretty much remember things, I don't remember that.
Are, are you referring to the redoing the entire building or just?
I'm, I'm saying we heard last meeting, what was that, the meeting was going to be with Mr. Stogner. We were going to start this set of four and this set of four. But as I understood it, the high priority was to get the Family Life Center back quote unquote online and that family moved in there, okay? And that was two weeks ago. And supposedly, if I remember correctly and could go back to the minutes and look, that was supposed to have been done at the end of that week. And I may be wrong and stand to be corrected. But you know, we're talking, this is, we met over there now.
Month ago.
Yeah, six weeks ago. And I, I just was trying to figure out how long it was taking us to actually get some things done.
The, the uh paperwork back from Mr. Stogner was going to be at least five weeks to start the, hopefully, get the bid process started. Don't know if that's going to occur or not, that's what his estimate was. So we'll be waiting on that. I can tell you that the lady with the five has been moved. She did not go to the Family Life Center, but she has been moved. Family Life Center has still not been approved by HUD in the system because there's some kind of a conflict between two softwares before we can actually move them in there. And they're trying to, trying to work through that. I will tell you that we had our first training with the consultant that is going to work with us on the mercy, emergency housing vouchers last, I believe it was Wednesday. And that was the kickoff meeting for that. I attended that along with Dr. Scott and uh Darlene Hughes. And hopefully that will be moving forward. They have so many hours allotted for us to do training to bring our emergency vouchers program up to, up to standard, I guess. It's, it's not that we don't have vouchers, it's that we don't have any landlords willing to let us have their apartments.
For section eight.
We're working on, no, this is for emergency housing.
Oh, emergency.
So we're working on trying to, to come up with some incentives that HUD is going to help us with to try to figure out some way of getting some more landlords let us use the buildings.
And it may have been said about the uh move to the five bedroom unit, which is the mayor's address. I know it was said that um the goal uh was for the burn units to be back online by the end of that week. And that did, that did take place.
It did take place? And folks have been moved, have folks, are folks in the burn units now?
Um, don't know if folks are in the burned units or not, but they're back online.
I think there's been notifications, I don't know that they've moved.
Right, they're eligible to be moved out of units when there's a need to move them out and use those as a rotating basis to get people out of units that have to be, have to go under, undergo uh more substantive repairs.
And we've got several of those that have been noted.
And I've got the minutes from last meeting because I wasn't here, so I printed it. And there is no mention that it would be a monthly update on public housing.
Well, that may have been one of my reports.
Okay, so it wasn't actually in the minutes.
He was going to come every month.
And not everything gets in the minutes as well. I have significance that usually.
Okay, any more questions? Moving on to the consent agenda, number 13, consider closing PD Avenue for trick or treating on Halloween. Uh, before move to number 14, counsel, you got an email late this afternoon in opposition to this. So I want to make sure you're aware and have seen that email before I brought that up to you for your vote. And then number 14, consider road closures for Fellowship of the Idiot Run, Moonlight Madness 5K and Beach Blast 5K. Counsel, how do you wish to proceed?
It's uh, uh, just for complete transparency, I would like to take 13 off, do 13 by itself. So instead of it being a combined consent agenda, I would approve for the consider road closure for the Fellowship of the Idiot Run, Moonlight Madness 5K and Beach Blast 5K.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve number 14. Second, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving back to number 13, consider closing PD Avenue for trick or treating on Halloween.
Uh, I, I just will say, I did read that email. Uh, and I think if I remember correctly, uh, and I guess I could look it up now, it was someone in the 11.
Paul Carpenter.
1100 block.
Actually, he said, I recommended to him to do the email. He, he's very concerned with regard to the, and I spoke to the chief about this as well. The early closing of PD, typically it's supposed to be six o'clock. There are people on PD that work out of town now and they, last year had difficulty getting back on to PD to get to their houses. Uh, Paul's wife gets home about 6:30 uh and she works in uh Marshville. So the consort, and, and the chief said, uh, see here. He's back in the corner. Oh, okay, maybe you'd like to come up chief and uh allude to what we were discussing, maybe, may help us out.
Yeah, I'd recommend if there's any residents that need the barriers or need to escort through there, if approved by council, that we could have staff on site to, to manage that.
We've done this, I don't, I don't, I'm sure that there might have been a minor inconvenience there, but we, we put on the flyers that if you're resident and you need to get in to move them and move them back, there's usually people around, especially around 6:00 or 6:30. I mean, when I, I walked through there and I saw that there was cars that had to come in and get their house, people moved them for them and moved them right back.
Did, did the video come in with that as well or just the email?
No.
No video.
Okay, there, the picture, actually the clown there is the resident who lives in the White House, the side of the church. So when he came in last year, this is from uh last Halloween, she actually got out, he had moved it, got out in front of his vehicle and was. he had moved it, got out in front of his vehicle, and was sitting there waving and trying to call the police to solve the situation. So, I'd ask him to send both in, so we'd be aware of what the neighbors possibly or have experienced in trying to get back into the neighborhood. And if the chief's suggestion is the best that we have, then I think we need to move forward with that.
What was the comment he had in that email about sharing the wealth and moving it to a road that another council member? I mean, there's seven of us up here, which...
Well, he was just saying, why don't you move it to Forest Hills? Or why don't you move it to...
I didn't know if he was singling somebody.
Yeah, you know, the churches or to the commons, or Y and C.
So, he wasn't singling no council member?
No, 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 not at all, not at all. You know, every year is right there, and he says, why are we having to do it and nobody else? Well, it goes back for years, that's been the key area of traffic, even when I was growing up. Got more candy there than anywhere else.
And it was not closed then?
No.
I mean, it was still open, people were out all in, I used to drive home and try to get them in.
Yeah, there's just more people congregating there now than there has been.
And obviously, you can't do every single street right near each other, but if anybody else wants to come in and...
Well, that's what I...
Then they're welcome. If somebody over in Oakwood or Forest Hills wants to do so, then they're, you know...
Well, hopefully, they're watching this and realizing that, yes, we are taking it seriously and sharing their concerns.
Certainly.
And as I got a request, when I sent you that text or email to say, make, yeah, what are we doing? Because I'd gotten, I knew I had not seen any mention of it, so thank you for doing that.
Motion to close PD Avenue for trick-or-treating.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to close PD Avenue for trick-or-treating.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion.
From 5 to 9.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business, number 15, MJSR 2210, consider approval of 43-acre plus-or-minus major subdivision known as Morrow Springs. Staff, are you introducing?
Kevin Knight.
You're a busy man.
You are one busy man.
Probably get paid the big bucks.
It's not halftime yet.
Okay. Uh, yeah. Okay, go ahead and open that up, that's the, kind of the subdivision in total right there. Okay, so this is Major Subdivision 22-10, which is now being called Morrow Springs. It was called at one point Low Country Greens, and then also Morrow Heights. Morrow Heights, there was, there's another subdivision that was done with that name, and we have tried to work with county to try to eliminate duplicate names on our subdivisions as much as possible, knowing that certainly there is some duplication there. So, you guys should have all the information on the application that came in. I'm gonna go through the checklist here and discuss criteria for improvement. This is the property, it was recently annexed last month, I believe. It is 43 and a half acres roughly, and it is two separate parcels. There was one that was inside the city already, kind of right on the edge of the city boundary. And then, there's this other portion that was added as well during annexation. Formerly known as Morrow Heights, Morrow Springs is a proposed 97-lot, single-family residential lot, residential cluster subdivision located in the watershed at the intersection of Woodhurst Lane and Anderson Road, and on Highway 2427. The majority of the 43.47 plus-or-minus acre property was annexed into city limits in August, and the entirety of the site was zoned to R15. R15 allows for up to 130, 15,000 square foot, 15,000 square foot minimum lots in a standard subdivision, and up to 104 in a cluster subdivision, which is what they have, what they have requested. There are two primary accesses proposed to the development, both along DOT-maintained right-of-way. An extension of Woodhurst Lane at the intersection of Anderson Road, and a new entrance along 2427 with the new Pembroke Way, which would be right in, right out, right out, per the new super-straight improvements are both proposed. And I could show you that, this is Anderson Road right here. This is Woodhurst where it ends, it would be carried through here through the property. And then, there would be another opening right here, another access onto 2427. There are a total of four stubouts allowing for future connectivity to other large undeveloped properties to the east and the south of this development. This includes the extension of Woodhurst Lane, which currently extends 1.2 miles to Henson Street, and is likely to function as a local collector in this area in the future. Also, that also extends to the eastern boundary of the property. Traffic, traffic study was conducted showing a peak hour trip generation of 99 vehicles per hour. DOT did not have any major concerns with the proposed traffic generation. A 500-foot deceleration in right-hand turn lane is shown on the 2427 entrance of Pembroke Way, which may be required by DOT following their further review of the engineered plans to come. Open space, there's a standard 5% requirement of 2.17 acres of open space for this development, and additional 15.8 acres required for the reduction of lots in the cluster, for a total of 17.35 acres required, with 8.68 acres featuring active-use amenities. As proposed in the plat, includes 18.32 total acres of open space, with 9.08 proposed active-use amenities, acres of active-use amenities, including seating, activated lawn space, and play structures. Those amenities are spelled out, but they are not shown specifically in there. Staff will require those during civil engineering and final plating of the subdivision. There is utilities and topography, there's currently existing sewer water and electricity to serve the proposed site from Anderson Road, as shown on plans. Road design, all new 26-foot streets are proposed with 26-foot-wide asphalt, curb and gutter, including the stub streets, which is determined as permissible in the watershed due to this being a cluster subdivision. Normally, in a regular subdivision, that would not be desirable in the watershed. Woodhurst may see additional traffic in the future. The proposed street width on this section is 6 to 8 feet wider than the existing portions of Woodhurst, and should accommodate higher volumes than shown at present. However, if need be in the future, no on-street parking could be introduced in certain areas to help with the flow, and the 60-foot right-of-way and wide planting strips that are proposed will permit improvement to the street, if necessary later on also. Sidewalks, the standard 5-foot sidewalks proposed along exterior portions of the subdivision, as well as on both sides internally. There's one section that's currently not shown, and we will show that as well as a proposed change. Setbacks, standard setbacks for R15 are 40 in the front, 40 rear, 12 side, and 22 corner side. These are allowed to be reduced by up to 50% in the cluster, with the exception of rear lots along the exterior and on corner lots, which must maintain 16 feet. As proposed, lots will have 25 to 30 front foot, front setbacks, and 20 to 40 foot rear setbacks, 6-foot side setbacks, and 16-foot corner side setbacks, as required. Lots are permitted to be reduced by up to 50% and can be as small as 7,500 square feet in the cluster subdivision. As proposed, all lots will be between 7,500 and 15,448 square feet. General comments, staff believes that MJSR 22-10, Major Subdivision Morrow Springs, to generally meet ordinance requirements with the changes identified below. And we would request these changes, recommend these changes to be included with approval in order to meet ordinance requirements, including exterior sidewalk along the one small section of Anderson Road not shown. And it's really just this section right here, which they were not showing, they're showing everywhere else. Provide details on active-use amenities on engineered plans and final plat to be approved administratively, which is a frequent recommendation of staff. Also, provide any necessary changes to covenants and deed restrictions to ensure perpetual conservation and maintenance of open space and amenities and other private infrastructure. Again, another standard condition in these, with these cluster subdivisions. Also, any other changes as required by DOT to be shown on engineered plans and final plats.
Counsel, have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Whitley.
Excuse, would we need to include in that motion, the recommendations for the...
With the conditions.
With the conditions that were noted.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes, would include that in her motion?
Okay.
In fact, you're...
Second, yeah.
All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 16, review of changes in APD.
As chief's coming forward, let me just say a couple of things to introduce the item. So, obviously, chief has been working with staff to review some structural changes and other things that, you know, felt like are necessary to help make some positive change within the department and improve our policing abilities and service. So, you've probably seen there are some changes being proposed, and just wanted to, the purpose tonight, just wanna make council aware, you know, hopefully, that everyone understands what the goal is, what the intent is, what we're trying to do. So, if you get asked any questions, you're aware of what the changes are, what the purpose is, and that's what chief is going to cover tonight. So, thank you for allowing me for that little bit of introduction, and I'll turn it over to you, chief.
All right, good evening, and as Michael has just touched on, you know, since coming here a little over a year ago, I had some ideas coming in and looking at the structure of the organization. And at the time, talking with fire chief and how the fire department was laid out, we both had some ideas, but knew it would take time to implement some needed change. So, after a year in and looking at the organizational chart, you'll see the highlighted two sections there are the proposed areas that the lieutenants are gonna fit in on this first venture. And that's at the patrol level to give a needed leadership role that's lacking underneath the captain to the sergeant level. And what this is gonna do, it's gonna develop succession planning for the future. It's gonna have another leadership slash first-entry command level that is not currently here. And transitioning from the rank of sergeant to captain is a huge step. So, it's gonna give a piece of leadership and development to assist our staff in going from that sergeant to captain level. And the functions outlined here in this chart, but quite frankly, what it's gonna do is help the sergeants with a stronger leadership position to explain policies, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and why we're doing it, and foster better relationships in the community, not throw in there by utilizing extreme ownership. And the transformational leadership is very important, and it's something that we're all striving to develop at every level of the organization, right from the officer that just graduates out of the academy all the way to my position. So, the lieutenants are gonna be a strong piece of that in pushing transformational leadership down to the officers. Some of the character traits that I'm gonna look for in lieutenants, real simple, just a jack-of-all-trades. They are gonna be expected to be a well-rounded police officer with some investigative experience, kind of an attitude of extreme ownership where the buck stops here at my level. They are the first layer of command-level presence. They will have the oversight of a captain for some problem-solving and bouncing ideas off each other. But the lieutenant is gonna have that extreme ownership position that is well, is needed at the patrol level. And again, it falls in line with the strategic plan that we've been working on, specifically the organizational capacity. Again, it provides that first layer of the command presence, creates that needed layer between the sergeant and the captain. And then, it's gonna give our staff future critical experience, and we're gonna give training at that leadership level to prepare them for their future rank progression to captain. And community and economic growth and opportunities, with this piece of it, knowing as all the properties that we're looking for annexing and developing, Albemarle is growing, so it's incumbent that we grow with it as a police department to ensure that we are able to provide that safety measure for the community. And by having that leadership piece in place and looking at future growth with police officers, you know, we'll have that leadership in place, as that's expected to increase as well. Then inclusive community engagement, as you've probably seen the last several months, we've had a lot of increase in involvement out in the community. We're trying to develop and foster more relationships. Community policing is gonna be at the heart of everything we're doing. We can't do it alone as a police department, we've got to have the community on board. Part of the conversations you had on some of the properties earlier are a critical piece of that. Again, that's the police department working with other city departments, as well as with community members to solve problems. And the lieutenants, those positions, again, with that extreme ownership philosophy, they're gonna be critical in this part. And that is my last slide, are any comments or questions?
Counsel, have any questions? The training, is that, have you developed that in-house? Or is there specific training from outside sources that are used to help this individual move up in terms of expectations in that position?
It's gonna be a little of all of the above, we're looking at internal training with the other departments, where we bring our leadership teams together, have internal training as well as outside training. We have several leadership programs we're looking at here in the state and nationwide.
Further questions?
Yeah, go back, if you will, chief, to about, to where you've got your chart, would have been the second, there you go. You'll keep that open. Currently, I read somewhere that by the implementation of one of these, or these lieutenants, that that will forego a captain.
Correct, as you see in the chart, we currently have four captains. When I came on board, we had five, and I believe a few years earlier, there had been six at one time. With this layer, with four captains, we'll be losing another one in the next couple of years through attrition. And my plan is just to streamline down to three captains, and then increase the lieutenant positions. And then, as the ranks below start to grow as well, because of the growth within Albemarle, that'll give us that leadership level between the sergeants and the captains.
So, follow-up, how many current open officers do we have right now?
Counting the staff, because I don't, I don't count them as police officers yet, they're in the academy. We have 11 positions, but we have seven of them currently in the academies. And we just extended two offers for laterals that I don't believe, have we got those back returned? So, seven plus two laterals.
So, but we have 11...
11 vacancies right now for police officers.
That's on the road?
Correct.
That's feet on the street?
Correct.
And of those 11, seven are in the academy?
Seven are in the academy, and then we have two laterals.
And those seven, we are already paying because they're in the academy, is that correct? And they will hit the road when? When will they be graduated?
They graduate in December, they should be ready to go through their training in January.
And then...
About three months to complete their FTO.
So, by April, they'll be on the ground?
Correct.
And hopefully, by that time, you've got, you'll have nine of the 11. Is that correct, by counting? And it looks like to me that by looking at the HR report, we had 94 applications, have had 94 applications, just nine last month, just for police officers. Not counting lieutenants, not counting captains, not counting any of those folks who I find in the chairs, but folks on the street, how many officers, street road officers do we have?
We have 24 positions for uniformed officers in patrol. My goal, I'm setting for myself in the next two to three years, is to increase that, to make sure we have more patrol officers out there, calls for service and problems that have been identified. And then strategically aligning them to the times that the problems are occurring. We gotta look at the 24-hour, seven days a week, and make sure we have maximum staffing when it's needed.
So, if you've got 24 feet on the street, as I call it, got 11 openings, is that right?
Yes.
So, we've only got 13 out there right now, and...
No, we've got, we've got more than 13, we've got...
Well, if I take 24...
The vacancies aren't all in patrol, where we don't have...
Okay.
Where we don't have two sergeant positions filled, we don't have four... We don't have four detectives, so there's six right there. We don't absorb baller vacancies in patrol.
Okay. So patrol, if we've got twenty-four, how many do we have right now? About eighteen?
We've got at least eighteen to nineteen. We've got the numbers here on the chart, but it's small.
I can't see them. That's the reason I asked. I can't, I couldn't see them.
We've got eighteen.
Okay. I guess I just look at, and I know that during the time before you, okay, this is when Michael was sort of an interim there for a while, he did some changing of some things up before you came. And, and I guess for the folks out there that want to know where as an officer when they call, you know, I know that lieutenants and captains still go out, but we got to have the feet on the street as much as possible and not, you know, not the chiefs, if you will.
Right.
And I'm, and I just, I guess I don't like things being top-heavy. I continue, I mean, I, you are the chief of police, you make that decision, but it's been brought to us. And I'm just saying that, you know, I know those guys go out, and those guys and females go out on calls as well, but that's where people see it. I mean, that's, the community sees folks in cars or on the street and that kind of thing. So just throwing that out there.
Right. And just to follow up with that, with sheer numbers, you know, we haven't declined our staffing. We are filling those vacancies with overtime assignments. We're not running short on the streets. The officers are stepping up and filling those voids, but we can't maintain that. We are hiring and getting people in the door. We're not hiring everybody. We are hiring talented individuals. It's very important that we hire the right people for this job.
Oh, hands, right.
While balancing everything out, the men and women in the police department have worked very, very non-stop to fill those voids, to make sure that we're at safe levels.
And understand that, and, and the pain of overtime, but it's not just the pain, it's how exhausted that can make folks.
But also share with you, for having, it doesn't make sense for me to have a captain out answering calls for service when I'll tell you there's plenty of administrative work that is falling behind as well, because they are out there or have been in the past. I need them really being that command level, getting paperwork and other stuff that is very important completed. We have a lot of policies that we're in the process of updating. They play a critical role with that as well. The lieutenants now, they will, they'll have a little bit different of a scope. They will be expected to be out on the streets with the sergeants for oversight and handling calls for service and participating. So that will free up that level to put, put that position on the street.
For one, I'm glad to see this. I think it's, we've seen a lot of improvement in the last year or so. And that being able to, I think, taking the captains and skewing them down and increasing the lieutenant there, that, that gives these feet on the street a little more hands-on training than probably what they have had when they're out in the field. Would that be a correct assessment?
Absolutely.
And, you know, thank you for what you're doing. I think it's a great job in moving this forward for us. Thank you.
And this, and Saturday was wonderful. I mean, I went up to you and told you that. It's probably one of the best ones that I've been to, even when we did it in South, at the South Albemarle Park. I mean, those sentences.
It was great, but I also want to thank the Fire Chief too. Both of you did a great job of getting your personnel up there and having a lot of displays. It was a great turnout. One question on this, does our new most recent pay classification include police lieutenant? Are you going to have to come back and ask us to revise that?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Our most recent pay classification, this might be a Dana issue. Does it include police lieutenants now, or do we have to go back and revise that for you?
No, it, it should be worked into the current budget. And I'd been talking with city manager and with Dana over the last eight months in preparation for this. So we've got that worked into this.
All right. Council, have any questions? I think it would appropriate to have a vote to approve this.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Drysack, it by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Number seventeen, ARPA tranch number two funding. Council, you have in your agenda the information that we have previously seen. It contains the Alleyway Project. It also contains the recommendation from the committee that looked at the tranch funding. And I think Ms. Hughes, you asked for this to be back on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, as I've talked about in the past, I, I'm a strong believer that this money that we're getting, it's, as we've talked about, it's a one-time opportunity for us, and we need to do items with it that we typically would not have funding for any other way. We were presented the King Alleyway Project. It looks like, if I'm looking at that date correctly, we were presented that in May of 2021. Would that be accurate?
I think it may.
May of twenty-one?
Well, we have an ordinance.
It says Alleyway presentation, so I'm thinking May seventeen of 2021. Ross, can I borrow you for a moment? So, I know we budgeted some money. In fact, the ordinance that we had included, this is dated November twenty-twenty, November second, 2020. So Ross, when we initially sent out bids for this project, I know they came in much higher than we anticipated, correct?
Trying to recollect. If I'm not mistaken, the first time we put it up for bid, we didn't have enough bidders.
Okay.
Well, I think we only had two.
All right.
So we had to re-advertise and put up a second time. So there was a little bit of delay in that process.
Okay.
But then when the second bids came in, that's when we, you know, we were able, I think we had two then at the time.
Okay.
One was around the nine hundred thousand range, and one was over a million.
Okay.
To do the project.
Okay.
Which was way over our estimated budget.
Right. Okay, so the nine hundred thousand, that was the one that I guess.
I say it was around nine hundred.
Right.
I don't know the exact.
That one was the one that we were gonna.
That's right. And I, I think we came to council, and council may have awarded the contract or awarded the bid.
Right.
But that's when we were going to go back and try to negotiate a little bit of the price.
Okay. So, and, and also, it looks like from this ordinance, you know, we were trying to do some in-house labor on some of these things with our own staff. So, I guess to council, something I would like for us to consider is the economic impact of doing this project. This to me is what, this is this type of money is for. Do a turnkey project like this, and in fifty years, the impact that this will have on our downtown will still be impacting us for years, even after fifty years. This is something that we've talked about doing. We haven't done anything yet, really, to speak of. There's nothing, if you look at this presentation, there's nothing really in here that, I mean, we, we send this out to the press, it all looks good. And I had someone make the comment to me, y'all talk a lot about stuff, but sometimes your things don't get done. And I think this is something we should seriously look at for part of these monies that we've gotten on the second go-around. But I know we need to have an updated cost. We would have to find out what, what it would be today to have them do a turnkey project. I don't want city staff, y'all got enough to do. This should be a project given to the developers to handle completely, in my opinion. But I, I think we need to, I would like to find out what the cost would be at this point. Is that, how do we do that?
So, what was bid was not fully turnkey?
Yes, it was. It was bid per specs, per that set of plans. That's, that's what was bid originally.
But the current cost that we've been working off of, within the project budget, Mayor, I should, I should have said, I'm sorry, is, is with staff doing part of the work. So the six fifty-one that you see would cover the expenses for engineering design that have been spent to date, plus it would also cover the bid with some of that work being reserved to staff. So, if that continues down that path, we feel like we need about approximately one hundred thousand dollars of supplies and materials for staff to finish up everything that is not in what the contractor's bid is that we come in at the budget we have. So, with that set, with that.
And that's, we're still waiting on some prices of some things to come in. There, there's some changes that have happened in the Alleyway since this thing came up for bid.
Okay.
There's, obviously, the, some of the buildings on North Second Street have started being renovated, some have been gutted. There's new electrical service panels put on the back, so that's changed the scope a little bit of what this original project was. We're waiting on some numbers from the utilities department now.
Okay.
Rough numbers might be an additional hundred thousand dollars. Now, with that in mind, we did take some components out of the original plan too.
Such as?
I know there's, there's one aspect in there with the artificial turf where you could throw cornhole.
Right.
That little area, we were taking that aspect out. I think there's going to be some changes in the, the privacy screen through there, because the screen that's in the set of plans was like a die-cut metal-type screen. We don't really have details on what type of material we would put there. That's just something that we would add later. I can't remember if the movie screen and the stage was part of the original bid or not. I would have to go back and look at the scope. But I know that's something that's definitely not figured in our plans right now.
And to me, that, yeah.
So that what I say too is, is what, what you have in the tranch two presentation was for staff to finish that, along with the contractor doing a certain amount of work. If it was to be all, I heard you correct me, correct, Ms. Hughes, was be turned all over to a contractor, that needed additional funding figure, would have to increase a fair amount. Is that also accurate to say, Ross?
Well, the original, the original bid was nine hundred plus thousand dollars. And that would have been a turnkey project with the, with the contractor.
Right.
That would be city staff, nobody doing anything. You would turn that contract over to them to bid.
Correct, right.
Again, I think our estimated cost, our engineer's estimated cost at that time was around six, six fifty is what we thought the bids would come in at.
Right.
But again, it was two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars more than what we were anticipating.
Right. And, you know, in my opinion, you know, we need the stage. I mean, we need the, the cornhole, the, the artificial turf. I mean, if we're going to do this, then we need to do this, we need to do it right, and we knew, we need to do it all the way. And, I mean, this is gonna, this to me is gonna have, with Pfeiffer downtown and the apartments that are coming in, this is, I think, I mean, why, I guess, why do we do, why do we do part of this? I don't know.
Well, and Martha, you just said, I think you have made the comment in the past, Ross, you know, if our staff does it, and it's going to do this, I think, Martha, you said in the, sometime, well, if our staff does it, what's our staff not going to be doing?
Right.
While they're doing this?
Right.
I mean, if, if.
This is not their job. They're, they have plenty to do. I, I'm positive they have plenty to do. This should be a project that we give to the developer or contractor and say, turnkey it, do it. And you guys do your jobs that you're asked to do on a daily basis. But, you know, we.
Some of the, some of the components in this project we could do. I, I'm not saying that's a problem, but you're right. I mean, it does take our effort.
Time from somewhere else.
From somewhere else, but.
Right.
I was just looking, I forgot I had the, one of the other aspects that was taken away is the stamped asphalt in the alleyway itself. And I mean, and again, that's an aesthetic thing.
I know, but it's all part, to me, it's.
Kind of, we, I think we were looking at the cobblestone stamped asphalt going through the main area, not through the whole area, but that was going to be taken out too, because that can get pretty costly. There were just some, there's some aspects of this project that were taken away to try to bring the budget down to where it would be manageable.
But I think that's, to me. Right, but to me, this is why, this is this kind of money. This is why, you know, you get something like this, and the economic impact this can have for the city for years to come, but let's do it right. So when people look back at this project, we didn't cut the corners, we did it the way it was presented, the way it was intended, and I, I just think that's where some of this money should be considered.
So there's, there's nine hundred thousand dollars on the last recommendation from the ARPA work group, sort of in reserve for potential uses. If you look at that presentation, it was nine hundred thousand dollars reserved for potentially additional street funding and also for stormwater grant match. That's sort of a placeholder figure. So that figure could be reduced to make up the additional money if council wanted to turn it over completely to a contractor.
Okay, so let me understand this, Michael. Are, are we saying that potentially we could do what was initially presented? And I'm, I'm talking the artificial turf, I'm talking the stage, I'm talking the stamping, the whole project potentially, okay, no staff involved, using some of this reserved money here that you're mentioning of the nine hundred, is that, am I following you correctly?
Correct. I think the, the way the ARPA work group left it is, you know, this is an amount that could be used for something like additional street paving or stormwater grant match. There was no direct expense tied to it to match nine hundred thousand dollars. It was just a placeholder that could be used for those things, so it could be redirected.
Recommendation was a hundred thousand to go toward the alley for staff's work to finish that. The cost of the police, police and fire radios, about a hundred and twenty thousand for city halls, security improvements that were needed. And I guess that's it. And the rest, the nine hundred thousand or so, was going to be determined at a later point to be split, because we didn't know with the water, with the stormwater, all the infrastructure money that was going to be available, if those were going to be matching requirements for grants, and maybe designate some of that to match grants for stormwater, and then maybe have a chunk to do some, you know, an impact on the paving. Maybe add four, five hundred thousand dollars to pave. So that, those two pieces were kind of in flux as far as what, how they were going to be designated, so.
Well, I just, I think if we look at the ordinance twenty-two thirty-nine references that we established a project budget on November second of 2020, okay? That's, so we started this whole project. And when Nikki was here, Nikki was pushing this thing. And even before Nikki, we were talking about downtown, downtown and beautification and that kind of thing, even with Christina. But we haven't really seen a whole lot of that. We've talked, and I think, and that's the issue, we've talked about it, but we've not seen it. I think it, it fell on you then, Ross, back in the fall. And I agree that we, we need, we need to shut, we need to finish this in some, I mean, I drove down the alleyway yesterday on Sunday, and it's just as holy as ever, and trying to get back to the sweet shop. Yeah, I believe that we've got to do it in, in its total, total, the total package.
So with that, with that being said, what, I guess, what do we do? If, if we want to totally do this project as it was presented, now I don't want to cut stuff out, Ross, I don't, I want the stamping in, I want the turf in, I want the stage in, as, as it was presented to us back, and as we presented it to the community, you know, that's kind of what we said we were going to do, what do we do at this point?
But how much more is it now?
I don't know.
That's, that's what, that.
That was the, that's a question I was gonna, might have to get with Brad, or I could just go back to the contractor and say, hey, you know, we need to revisit this, this is what council's wishes are, we're looking.
What do we look, what's the cost?
Total project again, what, what's your timeline? And are the prices negotiable or?
Right.
What's it going to be? Because I would have to look at the, the terms of, of the bid.
So, and I'm not throwing anybody under anything, I'm just asking a question. Why have we not done anything more than we've done? I mean, I'm just asking, and I don't know who needs stance for that.
Money. I mean, that.
The budget adopted wasn't even close to what the bids have come in. It was adopted way ahead of any pricing and bidding, and that was probably not the right thing to do.
And our, our project budget now, I don't have it, I think it was in the packet, but I don't see it. I don't even know what we have left in our project budget now for, to where we would even be able to start again.
Right. So that's kind of why things have just kind of.
And what, what we've been trying to do as a staff is put some rough numbers together, because it's taking the Public Works Department and Public Utilities Department, Water and Sewer and Electrical, to try to run some numbers to figure out how we could do this internally, our part. I've got a document from NJR here. This was May the ninth.
This year.
Where they came back and they took pieces of the project, and they have their list of what they would be responsible for compared to what the list, what the city would be responsible for.
Okay.
And then what we excluded. And that was based on the conversations I had with the contractor.
Okay.
And so, you know, with the city, we're talking about all the electrical work, the water line and the tap for the irrigation, for any landscaping that would be back there, all the concrete, the curb and gutter, sidewalk, the ramps, dumpster pads, everything would be on the city. The utility poles would be provided and then installed by the city. The asphalt paving would be done by the city. And then any extras like the benches and the tables and those type things. So.
Yeah.
We, we. We, we, it's been taking us just, and with everything else we have going on. We, we're having to try to put, sharpen our pencil to see what do we have. And that's where we came up with that rough hundred thousand dollar mark to add to what budget we already have to make this work.
And my point is, I, I want to take staff out of it. I, I want to make it a turnkey project. Y'all need to be doing other things than trying to figure out how to manage all this on the backend of this. So, so I get, my question is if we need to update or find out from the contractor, what do we do? What, what happens now?
Well, we have to let him get with Brett and they'll have to work that out and come back to us. We can't sit here, we can't say tonight how that's going to work. We have to let Brett get involved.
So can we have, I guess, an update at next, next meeting possibly in three weeks? Do you think? Maybe?
My, my preference would be if, if council wishes collectively to go this route, I don't want to keep going back and forth with the contractor.
I understand.
Saying, hey, give me a price for this because I'm not, I don't want to take their time either. And then council come back and say, well, no, we're not going to do it again.
I totally, I get it.
Professional way to do it with the contractor, but.
I, I just.
I would like, I'd rather have a council decision on whether or not you're going to go turnkey or whether or not we're going to continue with the path that we're going on.
And we've got a lot of other projects in trunch two that are sort of in limbo, hanging out there too, that some decision points that we've got to come to at some point.
I, I just, you know, we, we talk a lot. We say we're going to do things. We, we push this out to the public. Oh, this is what we're doing. I've been asked, when's it, when's it coming? When's it coming? I said, oh well, we're working on it. We're working on it. Just like the alleyway next to the museum. That was going to be something that was part of the, um, uh, main street. Remember they showed us the drawings on that down there. There were, I guess, benches and some things like that. We never did anything with that area that we talked about.
That was, I think that was when we first started talking about a place making area.
Right.
And that alleyway was selected because of the location close to city events, but.
Right.
That alleyway turned out to be, well, the problem is it's privately owned.
Right. So this is a, this is a better option, but we need to put our money where our mouth is. And we have that opportunity to do that with this funding. And I'm, uh, that doesn't take all the money. If we fund this a hundred percent based on, we still have money. That's not taking all this number two spending. We have two point five million coming in.
Well, I think we need to react on some of this trunch number two, because we've got other projects that need to move forward. Uh.
Well, the, the radios, I'm going to say this, I'm a broken record. I'm going to say this. Those are reoccurring expenses that should be budgeted in the budget. It's going to be something we're going to have to buy. It appears maybe every six to eight years. That is not the intent. That's not what this money is designed for. This money is designed for these kind of projects. We can't do this with, without this kind of help from the federal government. We, we'll never do this project the way it should be done.
I will tell you, I reached out to our financial consultant and just asked him the questions that we were talking about before. If we use the one point four four two, I think is what the radios cost. If we use that on infrastructure versus buying it, the radios out of the general fund, I asked him what the significance was there. His reply was, you use one point four four two in the infrastructure fund, you would actually get that money from the rural water infrastructure at point one percent. Where if you use that amount of money to buy radios and you have to finance it, you're going to be looking at around three to three and a half. Now Motorola might give a little bit better rate, but you're going to give significantly more money and call, and it costs the city significantly more money to pay that out of the general fund and make payments than you would be to use this trunch. But I advocate for the trunch now, but I don't think I've made any bones about that all through the whole process that I'm looking for the cheapest way to save city the money.
Well, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that mayor, but you know, this, these radios, this is a budget item that we, we're going to have to buy them in five more years, six more years. How do you do, how do you do an alleyway project? We, we never, we never do all of what, we, we say we get this stuff done. How many things do we put on the shelf? Well, we'll do it some point or we'll do part of it or we'll do some of it. We just can't afford to do the whole thing. We can with some of this money.
But it's not an either or. You don't, you can do both of those. We have, what was it? How much was from the first trunch to go to the alley?
Two and, oh, no, no.
How much was it?
Oh, for the first one.
From the first trunch?
Yeah.
Two fifty, I believe.
Two fifty or something. So that, you know, plus you've got enough to do that and you can still do the radios. They continue going up in cost. Inflation is continuing. If we have to finance them, the rates going up, we'd have to pull three or four hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund to be able to make payments and reduce those services.
All right. So are, are we saying, are we saying we could do the radios and we can do this turnkey?
Yes, probably. You're holding nine hundred thousand dollars that you can make a decision on. You could approve the, uh, the trunch number two as presented by the committee and still have nine hundred thousand dollars in reserve that you haven't made a decision on yet. That, that could be used on that.
However, that nine hundred thousand dollars which is out in front of us could be, what the committee said was either streets or sto, streets and or stormwater. Okay. That's, so it's, it's, it's nine hundred thousand could go to either of those or to add some more.
Add it to the alleyway project and have that done turnkey. And then he doesn't have, he, he can go to the contractor and say, listen, uh, we have the money now and we're ready to proceed.
You, you can do it all. You have the money to do it all.
But I agree with Martha that, and I understand, I was part of that committee, Chris. I, I understand that. And Ronnie, I understand the, the zero percent interest versus the three. I understand all that. But also that is something that should come out of general fund. We should, it should, we've already, should have already gotten them this year. If, if we were in need of those radios, like I thought we were in need of those radios last October, we should have gotten them in this current twenty-two, twenty-three budget year and gone ahead and ordered them. I would love to see the alleyway done in it total.
I think the first thing that's got to happen is Ross, you've got to go back and let's see what's going to be based on the specs. Where are we with what we're seeing out in the building, uh, supply sector right now? It's going to be more than nine hundred thousand.
I mean, I, I can make a simple phone call and say, hey, you guys bid this back in.
Cause if you want it turned, we got to have that.
Six, eight months ago, is, is your price still good? If we give you the green light now and it, it could be yes, or they may look at their numbers and say, well, no, we might need to revisit.
Going to find out is ask the question.
That's right.
I'll say this, um, we got our work session, what, November fifteenth? Is that correct?
That sounds right.
Like November fifteenth.
Right.
Let's give Ross ample time to get his ducks in a row, get some firm numbers. Um, I will say, even when we first brought up this alleyway project back in.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
You know, I was a strong advocate, uh, for that project. But even now, I'm, I'm more, I'm more for that project because of the social district.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, more so because of the thriving activity that we see in like from bait and brews, street festivals. We're going to have a Uhar Brew and Company open up in back of us. And I think we're going to need that signal to a piece. They got so many different avenues of entertainment for the people that patronize our downtown. So in some way, shape, form or fashion, we need to add that planning session, be prepared to put out everything before us on paper and not talk off the top of our head and see what we got before us and see how we can make it all work. You know, right now, I think we're just going around in circles.
But I understand, I appreciate those comments, but also understand where it puts Ross when he's going back to a contractor and saying, well, we're here, you know, council's just doing this number. If we're all on the same page.
Just blame us.
No, but I understand that.
But I think if I'm hearing a consensus, I think we're asking you Ross to ask the contractor, turnkey, no staff. They do a turnkey, add all those things back in there.
No camping.
If his original bid price would still hold.
Yes.
That's what you want to know.
Yes.
With everything.
With everything. I want the stage. I don't want to cut anything out. I want the whole package.
Let's turn it over to Mr. Ferris to handle. Ross worked for him. They can get it together and bring it back to us in November.
Okay.
That's the budget, that's the budget work.
November fifteenth.
Number eighteen.
I'll just, let me, I'm sorry, mayor. Uh, that may, at this point, we may extend and that we've got one night planned, uh, based on, you know, our schedule from last year. If, if, just be prepared, it could, we could possibly spill into a second night or we have four to seven listed for that meeting. You know, just be prepared, we may go four to eight, you know, if we want to just keep it to one night. Just want to throw that out there. And we'll do what we need to do. And I think that's what we want to, you know, get everything accomplished necessary, but that, that may.
That's the fifteenth, right?
Yes.
Tuesday?
Yes.
Moving on to number eighteen, discussion of Walker Fang Committee. That is in your agenda tonight. You have four applications and what council had said previously, when we get the fourth application, we would, we would decide to move forward with this. We still need a fifth person and that needs to be from district two. And if you want to equalize somewhat male and female, it would need to be a female from district two. You've got, uh, three males and one female right now that are recommended in those four. If council looks at those four and if you're interested in proceeding with that, you need to authorize the attorney to draw the resolution to come back to us to start that committee. And if we do that at the next meeting or two, then Cindy, our clerk is in charge of it. She would probably have her first meeting right after the first of the year. Council, what's your wishes?
I think we need to move forward.
Amen.
Yes.
I think we done.
Is that a motion?
We do.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to have the attorney draw the resolution and bring it back to, to either the next meeting or two, whenever she can get it done. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion.
Is, are we gonna, are we looking, is it going to be up to us to find somebody from district two?
I'll, I'll, I'll take care of district two, seeing how Shirley is not going to be able to probably do it.
Okay, good. A female?
We've, huh?
A female?
Yeah. It would be wise to go through that way. We kind of balance it out.
Thank you.
They are a lot more agreeable than the males are.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number nineteen, introduction of new assistant city manager, Mr. Ferris.
Sure. Darren, if you, come on up please. And as Darren's coming to the podium, just want to, uh, say a few things, which was, uh, first of all, very pleased to introduce Darren Rhodes as our new assistant city manager. Darren has a long career in state and local government, having worked most recently for the Department of Commerce and different areas. You know, for those of us that work at the ARPA, uh, the North Carolina League of Municipalities, ARPA statewide tour, Darren was actually listed, uh, in the presentation as one of the resources for that. So he's got a lot of experience in multiple areas, also having served, uh, several years ago, uh, in local government capacity. So very pleased to have, uh, Darren and, and somebody of his caliber here. I know some of you have been contacted by folks once Darren was announced as our new assistant city manager with positive comments and just really excited to have Darren on board. So Darren, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Uh, mayor, council, uh, let me just, uh, first say that, uh, I am truly honored to be appointed your assist, uh, assistant city manager. What attracted me to Albemarle, uh, was really just kind of the fact that it's recognized throughout the state as being a well-managed, uh, innovative and strategic community in its approach to service delivery, economic development, community development and downtime revitalization. Um, and in many ways, this is the high point of my career thus far, which has been, uh, spent serving communities throughout the state. And, uh, I'm truly looking forward to, uh, using, uh, my experience and, and really kind of, um, sharing my experience and, uh, knowledge, uh, to, um, identify challenges that we can tackle, opportunities that we can capitalize on, um, and really, uh, advancing the policy directions of this board. Um, I'm excited about engaging with the community, uh, engaging with the business, uh, leaders, uh, engaging with the citizens of Albemarle and, uh, really supporting the work of the city manager and his outstanding leadership team. And so I thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard. We look forward to it. With your planning, spending, experience, a little bit of economic development, I think you'll fit in right with us where we need the help right now. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Uh, coming around the table quickly, Mr. Ferris.
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend.
I'd just say, great turnout, uh, week before last at, uh, street festival.
Well, awesome.
I was surprised with the turnout they had.
Miss Hughes.
Um, I think most people have seen this, the Stanley magazine, but a nice, nice article on Kim Scott, our public housing director. I think that was very well done. Just wanted to point that out if people haven't seen that. That's all.
Miss Hall.
It won't be too quickly. Hey, uh, do we have dates to burn yet, chief? Do we have burn dates? Okay. But will you let us know when you do? Okay. Thank you very much. And do we know, Mr. Ferris, when social, what's the update on social districting? I read what was in the packet, but I didn't see a date.
No, I don't have any update on that.
Okay. I just, you know, when we found out that, um, she ended up going to Raleigh to get it done back a month ago. And I'm just wondering when we're going to be open to that, uh, when we're going to be able to exercise that. Uh, for some of you, you may have known that Cycle North Carolina came through Albemarle, uh, about two weeks ago. Uh, it was, um, Tent City down at YMCA Park. They left here and went to Laur, um, to Laurinburg. Just was a great, it, it was bringing a lot of people to town. And I will tell you that our, um, downtown businesses did a fabulous job, got a lot of folks in and out of them on Wednesday evening. And Thursday morning, there was a stream, I saw the stream at Sundry's. People were coming to eat and Sundry's were uh, very hospitable about what they gave to the bike riders that day as they were leaving. So even though we did not know as a city or have a, a lot of, uh, knowledge what was happening beforehand, when they got here, or we didn't, at least I didn't. Uh, by being there, um, seeing it all in action, uh, it was great to, to have our city on that map this year. So thank you.
Mr. Whit. Uh, just a couple of things. It was a great community night out Saturday night. Um, if you couldn't find anything to do Saturday, you just didn't want anything to do because we took my granddaughter and ran to death all day long trying to get stuff. The museum had the, um, excavator simulator from the community college. She loved that. And just, we toured the Baden Dam Narrows, uh, then came back up to community night out. So there was a lot of stuff going on. Um, I've got my pink shirt on, so it must be October. Uh, just wanted to continue to do my little part to raise visibility for breast cancer awareness. I was at a, had dinner one night with some classmates who were planning our class reunion. And there were three of the, there were four ladies at the table with us. Three of them were, uh, breast cancer survivors. And my wife was one of them. So it's still very common. Uh, but if you catch it early, treatment is excellent nowadays. So get your, get your mammograms. Um, the only other thing is early voting starts Thursday, so go vote.
Mr. Dry.
Um, I'd like to say, I, I was happy to see some of the candidates that are running for positions on the city council here. I think it's important for them to come in, find out what's going on because whomever gets to sit up here is going to be dealing with the same things we're talking about right now. So I would encourage them to, uh, come out and get firsthand information on what's going on. Also, I wouldn't, I don't want us to forget about the hundred years, uh, of football in Albemarle High School. Uh, it's an important milestone for this community and I won't go into a whole lot of things there. But, uh, you could just look at the people who have come out Albemarle High School, played football primarily and have made a great impact on our state. Uh, and that's all.
Thank you.
Dexter Manson.
I'll entertain a motion. We're going to close session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A, one, three and four confidential and privileged information. Consult with the attorney and economic development.
And will you add six personnel?
Six personnel.
Thank you.
So moved.
So. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitely, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
You got a call.
Coming out of, uh, coming out of closed session, I'll entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Come out of closed session. I have one motion we need to do. Motion to satisfy the deed of trust filed and filed and booked four twenty-two, page eight thirty-nine for Jewel S. Wood in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. City attorney will coordinate the filing of appropriate documents.
So moved. And then I need to, I want to ask a question once we get a second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Whitely, further discussion.
Do we need Brett to have any date from when this was? I think it did. Okay. So it's, it's refer, I just caught that. It is referencing a deed. Okay, gotcha.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed, motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to our-
Hey, let me just, one other motion. We have 45 new PA students, guys, 45 new coming in January. So just know that, that many more people are gonna be downtown. And Michael, I don't know where we are on Fourth Street, on pay, on the repay, I mean, the direction and that kind of thing. I know we had talked about that, and I just thought about it sitting in here. We might need to be looking at that for November because of these new additional students that are coming in January. Thanks.
I heard a presentation the other day by, uh, Jordan Hotel. He'd only had like a couple of the applications so far from Pfeiffer students.
Yeah, most of them are not.
Most of them have been other, other folks.
I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, November the 7th at 6:30 PM. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitely, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?